We're going to continue where we were here in item number two. Kathy, you had some additional things you wanted to raise?
Thank you. So I want to talk about, I want to talk about our understanding of B. And so it talks about by right entitlements through mapping and code revisions with the intent of increasing the supply of income restricted affordable housing and of missing middle housing. And I've proposed taking it out, but I think the other, the other alternative here would be to say including affordable missing middle housing. It wasn't clear to me, and I wanted, and maybe it's just a misunderstanding, the way it's written right now, it sounds like missing middle housing would be done through by right entitlements and would not be income restricted.
I think that's going to be a issue of discussion. I think the people's views on that differ on the dais.
And so I think then I need to understand, I think we need to talk about it because, for one thing, I mean, I have a lot to say about that, but I think if we're encouraging, number one, what are, what are our understandings of missing middle housing? As I read the staff description, it's everything from a duplex to a small apartment complex. And so if we're including, if we're including by right entitlements throughout the entire city for everything from a duplex to a small apartment complex, we're in effect disincentivizing the construction of affordable housing. And what the market will produce is, is not income restricted, missing middle housing. It's going to be just missing middle housing. So if we're talking about, if we're talking about that as a housing typology, and I think this is one of the, one of the things that happened during the Code Next. I think the, some, I think some people talk about it as mixed, as providing us with a level of income diversity within that housing type, and some people are talking about it as a housing typology. And I think we need to be very clear about what we're talking about. The staff's definition is housing typology and with no tie to income. And so I guess I want to hear from those, I guess I want to have a full discussion about this, and I also want to show my slides.
Okay. Jimmy?
Yeah, so I think part of that conversation is not all levels of missing middle applied in all areas. So, you know, the three unit minimum or the three unit by right that, that some of us have advocated for is not a small apartment complex. So it's also, I think, easy to think that it means small apartment complexes everywhere, but it doesn't, for me, it wouldn't mean that. And the, there is an element of measuring the by right entitlements that exist versus what they've gotten us. Because if, if, if there's staff analysis that says the real problem that's not getting us missing middle is that we only allow duplexes side by side instead of stacked, if that's an analysis that we can get back that says, you know, the entitlements are actually fine, it's the non-zoning sections that are broken, in this frame of the problem, that would be really good information. That would help understand why areas with, I think, what was the 40% of entitlement, I can't remember what the story was about Bolden Creek, but that there were already entitlements that existed. And so my reaction to that is, but I'm not getting what I want there, or that we're not getting necessarily the housing, maybe there's another reason. And it's not necessarily entitlements, maybe it's the non-zoning chapters and how they intersect.
I agree with you about the duplex point that you raised earlier.
I think, I think there are, I think there is a lot of confusion in the code around single family attached, single family not attached, duplex, and it, and it's, and that is an area, I think, of, at least with the two of us of agreement, that that's an easy cleanup. It looks like Councilmember Casar has something, but I think, I think how do we, okay, well, I have more questions once I hear from others.
I wasn't meaning to interrupt, I just turned on my microphone for whenever.
I think the issue on the floor is, are we going to give by right for missing middle housing with or without affordability tied to it?
Yeah, I mean, right now, our density bonus programs, and VMU is, is one where we are getting onsite units, and that is because the entitlements have been tied to, have been tied to a requirement for income restricted units. And then in, in some areas, and I'm going to show an example, if we can bring it up, of just one street in, in a neighborhood, in my neighborhood, but it's pretty, and we can kind of go through these quickly, this is a mixed use property on, on Guadalupe, and you can just kind of fly through them. The next uni, the next one is, this is a fourplex, you know, small house scale fourplex, next please. Next. And let me just caveat this, that I'm, this is, you know, I walked around for a couple hours taking photographs and kind of tried to make, I didn't track them back to ownership records and whatnot, I'm just trying to make some, some approximations based on, on what I saw in terms of doors and mailboxes, but it's consistent in, with, with what I see as the numbers in terms of rentals from the demographer and from other sources. This is a, has a, this is the house next, we're going sequentially down the block. This is a house with an ADU, the one next to it had a house with an ADU. Same, I believe, next. And then this is, this is a small apartment complex at the corner, and I, somewhere in my script have how many units is in that one. And then you have an alley, and then right next to that, and I think we have pictures of this, is a newer ADU and the house that fronts it. So, so this to me is, you know, as somebody who represents areas that have developed like this, is this pretty characteristic of the neighborhood I live in, Heritage. It's, if you look at the figures that we got in Aldridge Place when we went through the local historic district and the number of rental units within that local historic district, we talked about Hyde Park earlier, I haven't looked so much south in a while at, at the neighborhoods I represent in the south or in Delwood and Cherrywood, but, you know, my guess is that we will see areas like that in other central neighborhoods that you all represent as well, where you have missing middle housing. I mean, you have a fourplex next to houses with ADUs, almost all of that side of the street, up and down from Lamar, from Guadalupe down to Lamar, almost every one of those houses has at least an ADU, sometimes a couple, and a mix of MF and SF zoning, less so on this street than on some others, but you have the missing middle housing. And so if you then have, if we have by right entitlements, I mean, what we need in the areas I represent is income restricted, missing middle housing. Can you get to the, would you please pull up the next two slides? I think the next two are the ones I'm looking for. This is around the corner on 31st and a half. These are older, again, just another example, I'm sorry, would you mind backing up one? This is just, this is, this fronts the same street I was talking about, but is, I mean, it backs up to the street I was talking about, fronts 31st and a half. Next please, next please. Next please, sorry. So this is, again, this is just very quick research, and there's information that's missing from here. But this is a street view of, of another area in Heritage. It's one whole block, and you can see there were four separate properties, one was a fourplex, one are apartments, we haven't figured out yet how many there were in that, one was a single family, and then the one next to that was a duplex. Well, these were demolished sometime around 2007-ish, after 2007, they changed the valuations, we're 250 on each. Next please. And then Missing Middle was constructed along that block in their place. And they're very nice townhomes. I know, these are some of my closest neighbors geographically, and very nice people, but you can see how that changed the valuations of those parcels. So we've replaced what was missing middle housing with newer missing middle housing, and the, and of course, I will acknowledge, the market has changed, we're talking about different years, the valuations I showed you first were 2007, these sold in 2010, and when I can get them, I will try to bring back those sale prices, but they were pretty high. And then these are the current valuations, and I think one is on the market in the 500 to 600,000 range. So, again, I think that we need to incent, I think we need to focus on income restrictive, income restricted, missing middle housing, and not provide by right entitlements for increases to get us to that missing middle housing. Because what, what the market will provide is market rate, missing middle housing, not income restricted. And what, and what we could do is what I think we've acknowledged elsewhere in the document, we don't want to do, which is incentivizing the redevelopment of existing missing middle, missing middle housing. So, and disincentivizing the use of our density bonus programs. And I don't know why we would want to do that. That's our best chance of getting new units, other than outside of our bond funding. Thank you so much. I think that was my last slide, thanks. And, you know, again, these are quick examples, I could probably come up with a dozen more if I needed to, and likely you all have them in your own districts as well.
Greg, and then Allison. And Anne?
So I, I agree that we should try to, we don't need to have significant upzoning of our existing missing middle or existing apartment stock. In fact, during the draft three process, we were brought back by the consultants, options for increasing housing capacity in the city by over 300,000 units, and that actually not upzoning some of our existing small apartments or older apartments was only reducing capacity by like 3,000 or 5,000. So we can increase housing capacity without necessarily having to do that on top of where existing low income people live, or where existing renters live in missing middle, in missing middle housing. So I think there is ways to expand the amount of missing middle and expand the amount of apartment stock without having to do it on top of where people would be most likely to be displaced. I do think, though, that it's important for us to get income restricted housing on the ground, for us to get income restricted, missing middle on the ground, and for us to get market rate, missing middle on the ground. And we need to do each of those things. And because when people are getting displaced, we actually just got a report back that the city paid for, for unfair housing, and it showed that overwhelmingly, by far, the number one way that people get displaced from Austin is that their rent increases, just that their rent goes up for their existing place. So people need more places and more options of places to go, so we need more housing stock generally to address that issue. So what I'm in favor of is adding entitlements on the corridors that come with a density bonus, for you, in order to take advantage of the increased height or the increased FAR or what have you, and that we allow for more missing middle in places where it's not allowed. Because just like, and you represent more central neighborhoods than, than I do, Councilmember Tovo, but I do have some of them, and as you noted, there are certain places that developed earlier in Austin's history where there was a lot of missing middle. But frankly, that increase in the amount of missing middle has not kept up with population growth, there is not lots of new missing middle housing generally being developed, and so we need to have more places that can be missing middle. It will not be, as you point out, as cheap as income restricted housing, but it certainly tends to be more affordable than the SF, single family product, be it new or old, that is oftentimes nearby. With, we actually asked last year for the Realtors to run comparables of, of single family detached product compared to attached product in Austin right now, and oftentimes very similar product was 30 or 40% cheaper when it was attached, as opposed to when it's detached. So yes, I think that we need to develop more missing middle housing, generally by right, and we can get missing middle, income restricted housing through the affordability unlocked resolution. So I think we need to do it all, we need more housing generally, we need more income restricted units generally, but we shouldn't hamstring our ability to get missing middle because we require an affordability requirement on all missing middle. We can have both, we can have an affordability requirement on some missing middle and some missing middle that's by right. So for example, the R4 zone that was proposed as part of draft three allowed for missing middle units by right, and then affordable units if you want to go above the four. So I think that kind of, of a program can get us some affordable, income restricted, missing middle, while also just getting us some missing middle on the ground that's good for middle class people, so that we can develop a city that's better for working class folks and for middle class people.
Allison?
So I appreciate that we are focused in on how we produce the affordable housing and how our code and the choices that we make with this land development code rewrite can get us there or not. I think those are the questions that we need to be asking. I have two concerns, and they're related as much as they can, because a lot was said by Councilmember Tovo and Councilmember Casar. The first is, I think that we have to be clear with people about what we're talking about when we talk about missing middle. Because once you start saying multiplexes, and that could mean anything, as far as we know, because it depends on the, you know, according to Code Next, it depended on the lot size that you had, then you end up in a situation where by right, you're giving rights to do apartments, and you're not having any affordability requirement, precisely is in those areas where you most want affordable housing, where it is most likely to be able to get an affordability, density bonus, or some other thing. And so I think, one, we need to make sure that we're very clear with people what we're talking about with missing middle, because people are trying to understand, and we talk about transitions, and we talk about other things, what does that word mean? Does that mean you could put an eightplex, does that mean you could put a fourplex? Talking about adding an ADU, talking about adding a third unit, talking about making a duplex be attached, those are really different concepts than putting an eightplex or 12plex across the street from you or next door to you. And they have very, people have very different reactions to those. So I think we need to keep that in mind. I'm also confused, as someone who's trying to figure out, how do we get affordable housing in a high opportunity area, which is lots of my district? I don't understand in the proposals that anyone's put forward, how I get any affordable housing in my district, because we're giving everything by right, and we're not requiring any affordability under some versions of this. And there's a lot of different versions, and, and I think in the way that the mayor had proposed it, we were not giving any by right unless we got the density bonus, and, you know, that's where I stand. I think we need to be laser focused on these 60,000 units, and we need to be asking ourselves, how are we going to get this affordable housing in these areas if we give it away by right? If we give it away by right, we're going to make the property values go up, and our affordable housing vendors and us are not going to be able to purchase that land for affordable housing. I just, I don't see how you get to the level of affordability that we're talking about. The market is producing enough market rate housing. We want more, yes, but we have tools that we could be using and harnessing to get this affordability, and we need to be laser focused on that.
Anne?
A couple of thoughts. So, so thank, thank you, Councilmember Casar, for laying out the three buckets. Because I think that we're all trying to figure out the same thing, and that is, how do we achieve what you laid out in all three of those buckets? And how do we do it in a way that we're not using tools in one bucket that disincents another bucket? So we want to get, I agree, that it would be useful for the city to have more missing middle. But I don't want to, to do something in that area that makes it harder for me to, harder for us to get income restricted or missing middle with income restricted. So I would love to see a list of tools for all three of those buckets that helps, and I may ask staff to do that. I mean, what are the tools for each of those buckets, and how can we make sure that we're not employing tools that are at odds with each other? I frankly believe that, and what I've seen so far, is that we need to tie by right entitlements along our corridors to some level of affordability. Now, we can, we can talk about what level and all that kind of stuff, but I don't, I think we have to, is one of our tools, otherwise, we're not going to get our income restricted housing. I also want to just point out, we don't have to talk about these now, but this is one of the reasons that I put out in addition number two. And my addition number two is a, is focused entirely on one of those three, which is, well, one or two of those three, the income restricted, and the second one you mentioned, which is missing middle that is income restricted. And so we can talk about these later, but I tried to capture a list of all the tools that had, that are relevant to the land development code that had been identified in our blueprint. Because I think now is the time for us to say that we want our, that relate to the land development code. I think now is the time for us to say, come back with a land development code that uses every tool that we've got to, to help us get to our income restricted and our missing middle that are incomes restricted. So, at the right time, we can talk through those, but I, I think that we need to be doing that at the same time. So then, my question's really the same. I would, I've come to the conclusion, and I'm happy to discuss it if I'm missing something, but I've come to the conclusion that we've got to tie by right to income, to income restricted housing along the core. And then I would just like to understand how we get our missing middle in a way that we're not disincenting affordability. And one of the things might be something that you said earlier, and that was that maybe we need to be looking at the non-zoning tools, that that may really be more of a help to us on getting missing middle, or it might be a help to us in getting missing middle. I'll let you speak to that. But I thought that that's, that's one of the tools we haven't talked that much about, as opposed to, as opposed to just zoning per se. So, anyway.
PO, then Jimmy.
Well, to me, you know, the missing middle is basically, you know, by right to me is saying, okay, you have a right to go up so high, but you're going to have to provide some kind of affordability to that. And that's, and I agree with you on that. On ADUs, we also need to figure a way to not make them as restricted, because I've gone through the process, and you have to build garage apartment, two, two car garage apartment, you know, and I don't even have two cars, and I'm not even renting it out, but I, I was restricted, I couldn't put a shower in the bottom, you know, and that just restricted me from being able to provide housing for a family. And that's what it's going to restrict me to, because I have a living space of about four, 640 feet, because of the imperious cover, the setbacks, I mean, there's a lot of restrictions out there. I have a place there that in 2005, this guy from California came, bought two lots, built four units there, and he, he tried to, he tried to sell them for $500,000, he couldn't. He sold them for 250 each, he left. Those houses now are selling for $650,000 apiece. I mean, and that was your missing middle, now there is no missing middle there. And these houses haven't changed, they're still the same house. The demand is so great there, that if we don't build more, we're going to continue to see those prices increase. My, my property, my market value went up to 577,000. And when they say that, that area went up 10% to 12%, it's true. All those units have gone up, and they were once affordable. I mean, I paid $21,000 for my lot, but of course, that was 40 years ago, so you, we don't know when that's going to happen, when the, when the economy could crash next, next year, and you'd be having houses selling down there for 250, and people would be walking off, you know, taking a huge loss. And this happened before here in Austin. So, you know, we need to be very careful with this also.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Councilmember Tovo, for the examples. I think having more examples is really helpful to the conversation, because as I've said several times, I think we end up all having a different picture in our heads, and then we're not actually connecting on the conversation. I found that listing of examples really interesting, in part because it is so different than what I see in my district, where there is missing middle, like I live in a duplex, but the zoning is SF2. So what one might assume is an upzoning is actually matching what's on the ground. So the analysis that we get back, you know, it's going to be very hard for us, or, or maybe for staff to really be clear, where the zonings are actually matching what's on the ground, and where the zonings are actually different than what's on the ground, when we talk about by right or increased entitlements. And so a lot of what I think about is, man, I've got all these duplexes in my district, including mine, that if they were to be torn down, you couldn't get another duplex given the current zoning. So I think that's, that's one frame of it. Also, where you have the zoning for it doesn't, and I don't, I've not heard an example of a way to prevent a property owner who has three units, a duplex and an ADU, from just tearing it down and building another three unit building, kind of under any regime. So I'm not sure how, how, how we might address that. I've heard a lot of examples about kind of shrinking the McMansion envelope, and then having additional units be part of the ability to go maybe a little taller, a little wider, and we heard planning commission do that the last time. But if you've, if you've already got stuff like that on the ground, is there a way to prevent, if, if the entitlements are going to match what's currently existing? And I think that's, I don't know how to, I don't know how to solve for that either. So, yeah, so like, one of the examples you had was that there was a site that already had two or three units, and it got torn down and was replaced with two or three units?
Yeah, it was a block, and it had four different properties, one was a duplex, one was SF, one was an apartment, one was a fourplex.
Yeah, so, so the teardown of that and the rebuild didn't get new units, and I don't even know that it would require a zoning change necessarily, maybe the combining of lots, but you see the point, right? It's like, if you've already got, I can't, I don't know that I can stop the teardown of an old missing middle to get new missing middle, so. And, and I'm, I, the, the questions about the increase in land value as we do the entitlements, I mean, I would like at least staff to point us in the direction of the research, because I'm, I'm struggling to kind of wrap my head around how that works. Because I don't think it's as simple as you could build more, therefore it's more valuable, because I just don't think it works that way, it's not that simple. And, and getting to the place where we have a density bonus program, you know, the one we have right now, I think we've all kind of acknowledged is struggling. And some of the proposals that we saw the last time around, where it broke the city up into regions, and then you calibrated it by region, I thought was really good. But I instinctively can only imagine density bonus when you're talking about a project of a certain scale. I don't really understand how it works at the missing middle level. And, and to be fair to Councilmember Walter, I think you're exactly right, we, we need to be clear when we talk about missing middle, we're talking about eight or three units, right? And I think that's, that's really important for us to be clear, because I'm generally thinking about three and four unit. I don't, I don't think, I'm not thinking about the bigger ones, but how would that density bonus actually work when really the math doesn't necessarily pencil out to build the third unit if, if the bonus requirements are such that, like, I mean, there's just kind of a market math issue that I would like to know more about, to be more comfortable with the level of requirements on affordability moving forward on the entitlements. I hope, I hope that makes sense, it's very complicated.
So I don't know where I am on the issue of affordability with missing middle housing, so I don't know how to apply it. I want there to be more missing middle housing, I would like the missing middle housing that happens to have affordability with it. I'm concerned about the math issue, I don't know how you do that, I guess there would be a fee in lieu, because I don't know that you could ever pencil it where, from an economic standpoint, a third unit got you there, a fourth unit got you there, it might be the sixth, the six unit deal, but then requires it to be that big in order to have affordability? So I'm not sure exactly how you do it, so I'm conflicted on that, and, and my repeated attempts to try and draft language that'll come out here in a second with respect to the transition zones will reflect that in me. But I do know that, and I'll say it just as an aside, and we'll say it again when, when the manager's here as well, I think that everything that we're doing here is becoming increasingly more dependent on our ability to calibrate density bonuses correctly. And, and I think that it's going to require us to have, again, this is operational, so I could be wrong, but my gut tells me it's going to require a person or two on staff that doesn't do anything but that, and has that particular expertise, because so much of what we're going to be doing is dependent on getting that right. You know, we're at a place where on the dais, we've often amended things to increase the percentage or lower the MFI, and we actually need a science behind that, we need actually someone to come in to say, this is what this number needs to be in this situation to achieve that result. I would also like, of the tools that I have heard to address the kinds of things that Kathy was raising and others have raised, Allison raises, is that preservation tool, that incents keeping the existing home, the existing structure, by providing waivers from certain things, or greater FAR, or less parking requirement, whatever it is that does that. I'd like to see us really putting that on steroids while we're talking about trying to create situations where we're not incenting people to tear down a home that might otherwise have been preserved if we had expanded that preservation tool.
Brett Lloyd, DSD Development Officer, just a couple, one clarification, and then a couple comments that I think speak to staff's perspective on some of these issues. And the clarification is just, I've heard, we've heard the term by right used occasionally with reference to also income restricted, and the two are separate concepts. So when we, when we talk about by right, we mean an approval that can be issued without, without an affordability requirement tied to it. It's the density bonus type of projects that have the affordability requirement. Then the other, a couple other comments I just wanted to make briefly. I think staff are fully prepared, you know, depending on council's direction with the density bonus, to do some careful calibration work with the density bonus, and to be prepared to address those, the issues of calibration going forward. However, staff, and this is, I think, language was included in a memo that we issued on Friday, staff feel that some by right entitlements for missing middle housing are appropriate, and I think there are, and we have staff here that can speak to that if council wants to hear from them. And I think the two kind of overarching concerns are that, from a planning standpoint, I think some, the planning and zoning staff feel that, based on their familiarity with the, the housing capacity analysis that was done previously, that the housing capacity analysis that was done previously, that some additional by right entitlements for missing middle is an important piece in the equation for housing supply. And then additionally, I think there are some concerns from an administrative standpoint about the challenges of administering kind of an income restricted, density bonus kind of system for smaller projects, you know, that have, that would fit within the sort of umbrella of missing middle. And so I think those are, those are some concerns, but staff are fully committed to working with whatever direction council provides on these issues. They're sensitive issues and...
Yeah. So I would like to hear from staff because I think this is a significant issue that probably we're, everybody's trying to find and search for the right answers. But before you do that, Brent, just a touch base for a second on the by right concept. Because I think we are, I think you have a point, we're using that word differently. If someone going out and building is entitled to do something without asking for permission or a variance or anything else, I thought that was something that he had by right or she had by right. And if I am by right entitled to another floor, if I do 10%, then I have a affordability bonus density by right because I don't have to ask him for it. I can either take it or not. So the by right concept, I find myself getting tripped up over. If we're using by right with respect to affordability to say, even though you can get it by right, you have to give up something in order to be able to get it? I could probably think of other applications within the Land Development Code where I have to do that in order to be able to get something else, but I can do that by right or not. Maybe there's an administrative approval or a variance I have to get. So I don't know what the right answer is on that, but I think you are correct that that word's being used lots of different ways.
If you think of the concept of by right as just meaning there's no discretionary commission or council approval required, then I take your point that like an affordability requirement that is administered at a staff level is sort of still by right. But in the interest of sort of having some terminology that we can use to refer to the different things, we've been using, we've been using by right to mean approvals that can be issued without a corresponding affordability requirement imposed on the project.
Okay.
So Mayor, before, I'm sorry, before they speak, there's some things I'd like to suggest because they may want to speak to them also.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, we tend to focus on the density bonus program when we talk about affordability tools, but there are a range of other tools too. And I just think we need to be thinking about them all.
Sure. So let's get to the tools in just a second. The question that they just came up to talk to about was, was the issue of whether they thought, what Brett said was, they wanted to make a case or suggest why in their opinion it was important to be able to have missing middle by right without affordability associated with it. So I'd like to hear the answer to that, but then you can ask them whatever other questions you want to as well.
One of our recommendations that we adopted as a council was to develop a, bring options for implementing a density bonus program for missing middle. So we've already said as a council that we wanted some options to do that. That's in our blueprint.
No, no, no. And I think that'd be a good thing to talk about too.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's the same subject that you just raised. It's the, but we'll just hear what staff has to say. I'm just saying that if staff is now saying that we can't look at affordable housing for missing middle, that's contrary to what we adopted in our, in our housing blueprint.
I think they were just, but, would you want to talk to us about missing middle and whether or not it should always be associated with affordability issues?
But Mayor, can I just ask that we talk about, everybody is defining missing middle differently. And I just want to highlight that I think there is a very big gap between duplex and ADUs.
Okay. So when you talk about missing middle, would you define? Would you define how you use the word when you talk about it?
And I think just in the context, and it's not clear to me, as we had our conversation just now, what Councilmember Kassar regards as missing middle. You kind of talked about three units, which is a different category than eight plexes. You know, I just, I think that we're starting to have a conversation that's, it's really challenging. I mean, we might all be on the same page if we could be clear about what, how we're defining missing middle.
If you use the word missing middle, would you please be clear about which word you're using?
Hi, Council. Lacey Patterson again with planning and zoning. And before I get started, I'd like to say it's an honor to spend this special day with you. So thanks for having me. So to the definition of missing middle, generally what we refer to is, yes, that kind of additional ADU duplex up to that smaller scale apartment, no defined number, but maybe 10 units or something. It's a smaller scale complex, right? And 10 maybe even be high depending on the context. Really, it's that quadplex, eightplex, townhome, ADU, that range that we're not really seeing get built right now under our current zoning standards. To the conversation of...
Would you describe what's not missing middle? I mean, is an apartment building missing middle?
Yeah, a larger apartment buildings like we're kind of seeing today. I don't have a definition of numbers, actual units, but our kind of larger, I don't want to start giving too much criteria because I don't have an actual definition of stories or size, but...
But that's a problem, that's a problem is we're talking about stuff and people are hearing and imagining one thing and it may be that we are all on the same page and we're not, I mean, if we're talking about missing middle as three plexes and duplexes, we can tell what has been suggested.
So are there two different kinds of missing middle housing? There's house scale missing middle housing and then non-house scale, missing middle housing? Is that, is that a way to differentiate the universe?
So it's also...
House scale and not house scale?
It's also who you're, what income you're targeting it to.
Well, we can have affordable or not affordable missing middle housing. But as a typology, the structure that we're talking about, I wonder if for us purposes, we could talk about house scale, missing middle housing and larger than house scale, missing middle housing?
I would say the clearer the length, I think part of, I mean, the missing middle is obfuscating the complexity within it. And so I would, and house scale and non-house scale, I think is also confusing. I mean, to me, it's kind of, somebody can come up with something else, but it's sort of house, house scale and apartment scale. I mean, if we're talking about an eightplex or a 10plex, that's a, that's, you know, more like an apartment complex than it is like a house and an ADU.
So I'm confused. Does making it a house scale or apartment work as a differentiator, house scale and not house scale? Because I think we could imagine what that is and we probably have close to the same view of that. Okay, so let's try to use that word unless somebody has a better description. Yes?
If I may, when looking up a definition, the definition is, it's pretty clear. It's a duplex, triplex or fourplex, courtyard apartment, bungalow courtyard apartment, townhome, multiplex or live-work apartment. There's some very clear levels that are the definition of missing middle.
Which is also in Spencer's memo on page 19. It's drawn out.
Yeah.
If it's helpful for today's conversation.
Right.
And the issue we were raising is we don't understand what multiplex is and there are a lot of different numbers that go with multiplex and those numbers matter. And if we're going to start giving rights to 10-unit apartments and saying there's no way to get affordability when you put those right off the corridor or on the corridor in the most desirable places in our city, then we are never going to get affordability where we most want it. And we also create all sorts of conversations.
Great. So I would like to hear your view. And when you talk about it, would you talk, if it makes a difference, house scale, missing middle and larger than house scale, it's missing middle?
Sure. So they're both, house scale and not house scale are kind of comprised within that missing middle definition as part of that kind of diagram that visualizes it within the memo. Now, units or smaller apartment complexes that could get you 10 units, they, in at least the draft of Code Next, did have density bonus potential. Even those zones that allowed for four units, max eight, allowed for affordable housing bonus. So when we're talking about this missing middle scale, as far as we proposed it in the last draft, there was still affordability tied to them. And 10 units were never proposed in that house scale zone. So house scale itself as the component of missing middle was townhouses that were two stories tall and got you four to eight units or row houses kind of in that same context. Now, going above that and still that kind of missing middle scale, right? Because part of the concept is, is it is missing and it's what Austin's producing now and that kind of eight to 10 is still kind of an underproduction, is an RM1, two, maybe three, depending on the lot. And they also have density bonus potential within those. So when we're talking about missing middle from a staff perspective, I would like to point back to this graphic in our memo. It is really that two units all the way to maybe 10 or 12 or so. But within that scale, there is the differentiation between house scale, which we tend to think of about four to six, and then above that, which is usually tied in with a density bonus or at least how we had it in draft three. And if you would like to continue with that, we have the tools to continue with that moving forward.
Okay, so I understand the definition. Would you address the question that Brent raised, which was whether or not we should be only giving entitlement for missing middle housing where it doesn't exist if it's tied to affordability?
Yes. And that is tied a bit to more of that house scale or not. I mean, the reason we say that is because when we looked at the numbers from draft three, let me pull up the report card real quick. It's the, we mapped a very limited amount of zones, different than what the entitlements are today, that allowed for this missing middle product at these different ranges. And when we looked at the capacity numbers, they did not provide anywhere near the numbers that you are talking about in your different iterations of this direction to reach those goals. So tying it to a bonus, and I would ask Erica to discuss this a little bit better about the feasibility of bonuses within those smaller scale housing products, but the numbers without allowing, we think, by right, changing the map from what we allow today will not produce the numbers that you are directing us as it's written right now.
Okay.
That's the question.
Anne, and then Greg.
I'm sorry, when you, when you say, I think I heard you, but I want to make sure I understand. They will not produce the numbers for affordable housing and missing middle? Neither one of them?
So, missing middle for sure.
What about affordability?
Probably both. I can't speak as well to the affordability production because that is a calibration of the density bonuses and that's something we'll have to continue to work through.
Well, but we're talking about 60,000. Our target for affordable housing is 60,000.
Correct.
And our target for total, 60,000's part of, is 135. Understanding, of course, we want more capacity than that. But if you're just looking at numbers, and so to say that we, to say that we can't get the, or that we don't anticipate getting our numbers would tell me also we're not getting our affordable housing numbers either.
Probably.
Greg?
So yes, first of all, I concur that we need to have density bonus programs, affordable bonus programs in all parts of the city. And from our last draft, indeed, we were getting the vast majority of those out of the corridor, out of the changes on the corridors. So I think any characterization that we're not, never going to get it unless we squeeze it out of missing middle isn't true because we've got almost none out of it, out of missing middle. It's hard to get out of the missing middle. And the main place we've been getting it in every single iteration that has come out has been out of the corridors, which I agree should be citywide. So we can get a lot of it out of those. Out of missing middle, I understand that there is some reticence to administering small-scale affordable housing bonus programs, but I think that we can, I think that we can do it. I think that we can figure it out. We're figuring it out for affordability unlocked. We had some of that in the draft three. We're just going to have to sort of stretch our wings and be able to achieve that. So I think that the right middle place is to say we have to allow some missing middle to get built on its own because it's a good thing for it to get built on its own and provide the option for affordable units within the missing middle, which is generally what we had been pushing the consultants to do, but they actually didn't deliver to us at first, but eventually delivered near the end. At first, they were delivering us small apartment zones and fourplex zones without any bonus. And then they went and calibrated and found out that you could do a little bit more and potentially get an affordable unit. But what I don't want us to do is to wind up not getting missing middle and not winding up getting income restricted and just getting single-family or duplex redevelopment where we have no affordability requirements, where we get, and where we get almost no market affordability because we know that anytime somebody's renovating or building a new single-family home or duplex right now, it is much more expensive than what we could get through missing middle. So I think that there is a path where we map missing middle housing, again, defined as Councilmember Harper Madison mentioned, everything between duplex and small-scale apartment, not mid-rise apartment, and have affordability bonuses on top, but recognize that we want to get the missing middle housing itself. And that the vast majority of our affordable housing bonus units we can get are on corridors. So the, in draft three, they were able to deliver a 6,000 more in capacity, which is only 6,000 of our 60,000. And then through multiple rounds of pushing and working with the consultants and with Planning Commission, we got it up to, I think, 17,000 in affordable housing capacity, which is still far short of 60,000. But what was always told to us is we can never, getting us to 60,000 in affordable bonus units would require potential not missing middle upzone, but large apartment upzone of single-family zones, which nobody has ever put on the table. So I think that that is the, I think that is the struggle. But if we, but if we, I don't want us to wind up in a place where we don't wind up with missing middle, nor do we wind up with income restricted. So that's why we, I think, R4 with a bonus or RM1 with a bonus on top makes sense and then affordability unlocked kind of works throughout the city.
Kathy?
Yeah, I stand in my original place where if we're, if we're rezoning to allow fourplexes, sixplexes, eightplexes, 10plexes, why on earth as a developer would I ever, number one, why would I participate in a density bonus program? And number two, you're creating an incentive potentially for the demolition of existing missing middle housing. And I want to say, you know, the mapping, I mean, part of what I was trying to illustrate with the 31st Street example is that we have an enormous amount of more diversity in our areas than I think is apparent at this level of council. And I think, you know, you were describing some scenarios before that are particular to your area that have to be attended to. I mean, we are going to need to recognize more context level work or we're going, or we are going to fail at what should be one of our goals, which is the preservation of existing structures that are providing naturally occurring, relatively affordable housing. I mean, the new construction is never going to be more affordable than the old. I think you, you and I probably need to have more conversation about that earlier. I'm not sure if I was understanding you correctly, but Kara Bertrand just did a really good presentation to one of our commissions about comparing prices, rental prices, ownership prices in older housing, older historic housing versus newer. And there is, you know, I mean, when we're redeveloping properties, I see it all over District Nine. I mean, the rents are far higher than they were with the existing structures. But, but I think we're still, I'm not sure if we're even having a disconnect or not on, I mean, I hear you saying, I hear you saying RM1 and a bonus. I mean, I think, I think we still just, it's not at all clear to me where we are with the by right. At what point does it become a density bonus requirement? The staff, I think you said in Code, in Code Next, draft three, had it at four units or three units.
Yes, it was at, starting at four units in that R4 zone and then you could get up to six or eight with a bonus.
It was a bonus though. So if property was zoned R4, you were entitled to go to six with a bonus. And I think the question before us is, if you take the, what was an SF3 lot or a lot and you zone it to R4, which is an upzone, do you give them the R4, recognizing that R4 does not necessarily have an affordability associated with it, but it does present the opportunity to bonus into six units to get it? So the question that's in front of us right now is, do you, do you take that lot and take it to R4? Because the affordability is only by bonus, it's not a requirement associated with having R4.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, I would ask, if you concurrently do two units and we're providing, we're allowing for entitlements beyond those two units, why wouldn't we capture some level of affordable housing benefit? It just doesn't...
No.
And I agree that the calibration probably doesn't work to do another unit at that level. But it, I think you suggested a fee in lieu might be one way of capturing that benefit.
Anne, and then Greg.
Okay, so I think you all may have answered my question because my question was like yours. What is the point at which you start putting in the bonus? And the other thing that I would suggest is that density bonus is not the only way to help us get affordability, so we need to remember that too. Because we can't, we've already established that we're not going to get everything out of the density bonus program. So there are other things that we need to look at. So to my mind, it's got to be a combination of two things. We have to decide what the point is at which we, we put the bonus, which is the question that you raised, Mayor. you raised, Mayor. And then the other question is, we've got to couple that with disincentives for teardowns. Because frankly, I can tell you that I'm well aware of houses that are cheaper than the condos or the multiple units that are new. And that's, that's the case in the areas that I represent and I live, you know. So the fact that you are going to multiple units does not automatically get you a lower-cost housing unit than keeping an original single-family home. So my point is just that we need to couple these things and not put all of our emphasis on one, because to my mind, if we, if we, if we just focus on the missing middle, and particularly if we focus on missing middle without some kind of affordability tied to it, then we're not going to have the other piece, which is we really have, I really think we have to look at, how can we help preserve the existing single-family homes that are cheaper than replacing them with a large, new, single-family home? That's just as important to affordability as the missing middle part is, as the multiple units are. So I think that that's, so I think that we've been talking about that. You look puzzled.
Greg?
But I think it's, I think it's, I think that, all I'm saying is that we can't forget that piece. We need to do this with several pieces, and that just having one piece, we're going to end up with not the result that we're looking for.
Okay, so Greg?
And I had to say this last time, and I'll say it again. I don't, I've never heard a single person on the dais in over four years of being here, a single person ever say that because there's multiple units on it, it's going to be cheaper than an older existing home. I've never heard it said, and it's regularly used as an argument to point against or in concern of missing middle, but I've never heard anybody say, because there's multiple units, it's going to be cheaper. And I recognize that you're restating that, but it makes it sound like that's an argument that's been made, and it's just never, it's an argument that has never been made.
But you just, you just said it a minute ago, and again...
No, I didn't. I didn't say it.
Well, then I misheard you.
Okay.
So...
And so, it's, on an apples-to-apples comparison, when you're looking at similar square footage and similar year-built, attached housing is cheaper than detached housing in general. That's what I said just now, that's what the data shows, it's what we've all said consistently time and time.
And what I'm saying is that the difference that that's missing is the year in which it was built.
I said year-built, just a moment.
Anne, I think we've got that. So let's have a couple more comments on this question, because I think we've discussed this one round, and let's go to the next issue. It's called People Whose Lights Are On. So Allison, Pio, and then Jimmy. I'll make one last observation, then we'll move on.
So I've heard some agreement, which I have a feeling may already be in draft three, that I just want to point out that there seems to be agreement that we ought to look at some of the non-zoning items that are preventing the creation of missing middle, because we are allowed to do missing middle in a lot of places. My neighbor has an ADU that her mother lives in. I have other people who, because of the size of their house, were not able to put a sink in their ADU, so it can't be rented out. And so there are things that we can look at, both respect to ADUs and with duplexes, that I think there's broad agreement that might unleash some missing middle throughout the city. I think, again, we really do, I need to emphasize this, because I think it's super important as we're talking, and in how this plays in the public, is we have to understand what the numbers are that we're talking about. And, you know, if we're talking about three to four units, and that's our definition of missing middle, it's a different conversation. It plays very differently than when you start adding 10 units. And then when the zoning categories change the numbers that you get by the lot size, so that if you, you know, can accrete a lot that's above 7,000, then you can do even more than four units, you quickly get some really large buildings. I am not convinced at this point that in some of these areas where we're talking about putting this, that you cannot pencil out a full unit. But if we find that there are different zones of the city where you couldn't do that, we can be creative. There's, we have to work within the confines of the state legislature and how that approaches, but it could be a fee in lieu. It could be that the city buys the unit. We just did a situation over in Alamo where there was one affordable unit. Now, that was bought by a CDC, so it's not the developer doing it, but the developer did still eat the cost difference between what they got from the CDC and what they would have otherwise gotten. And that gets us closer to our goals. I am not the person who's able to do the calibration, but if we just give it all away, we won't get any of that. And I think we need to be mindful of that. And I think as we have this conversation, we need to understand that when you're talking about numbers above four, people get a lot more worried in the conversation. And so we have an obligation to be clear about what we're talking about, so that we don't create uncertainty, we don't create misinformation. And so to the extent that staff can help us to be very clear, I think that's really important moving forward.
Pio?
You know, and when it comes to the missing middle, you know, especially in the inner core here, the city, with the land value that's going up as high as it is, I mean, my lot is $350,000, I mean, with nothing on it. And these, the people that have, that have these older homes, yes, if they're not, if they're not ready to leave, it's a lot cheaper to be there. But the repairs that, once you pull a permit in Austin, you're going to have to upgrade everything that you have there, and it's not, it's not cheap at all. So a lot of these people are saying, well, I don't want to live in this way, in a house that was built in the 30s, you know, even though, you know, I have no payment for it, I just pay my property tax, which is super high, unless your tax was froze, you know, and you're 65. So it is a dilemma, you know, that how are you going to repair these homes, you know? And when people are paying that kind of price just for the land, yes, you're not going to be able to build a 100, 200, $300 home, even if it's a duplex, because of the high construction cost that's out there. So yes, it's very difficult, you know, to put a fee in lieu when it comes to building two or three units on your, on your property, because, or any property. So I, I can see where the four-plex, where there's one person, I could agree with, you know, one affordability, and by giving them rights administratively, say, okay, you're going to have to give us this one unit, or else you just don't build on it. But, you know, I, it's, in the inner core, I mean, the older homes, I don't know, but you can save them, it's going to cost you a lot of money. That's all I got to say.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I would like to know more about the, this thing that's, that we do in the city, that's happening in the city, where existing single-family homes are being replaced by multiple units, and that those multiple units are more expensive than the house it replaced. I think there's a really important detail about that's occurring under the current code, with the current fee structure, and the current process, and the current blah-blah-blah-blah, right? If we corrected some of those things, non-zoning chapters, permitting timing, blah-blah-blah, maybe, maybe that wouldn't happen. Maybe it would actually change the economics around those, those homes that get built. And, I mean, I've certainly had enough conversations with developers to know that sometimes what you get on the ground is just what the easiest thing was to get on the ground, because the bank is saying, I want my money back. You got to turn the project around quick. And that's certainly not going to get any of our community's values in terms of how the city grows. So I think there is, it's important, I think, to try and divide the question on that, to say, when that's happening now, is it because the current code basically only allows that type of construction, versus maybe there's ways to close that gap? And that gap, again, might be different in the most highest land value areas, and that gap narrows as you spread out, and you get out to the areas in my district where it's just, it's almost counterintuitive, but you can't get as many affordable units traditionally because the, it's all in the cost of the construction, because the land value is so low comparatively. It's just, it's a very challenging economics. But I don't want to lose the thread on when we're seeing stuff happen now that we don't like, it may or may not be a consequence of a code we're trying to change, or the non-zoning chapters, or the fee structures, or the, how long it takes to get a permit, or, you know, or because that site had to go through a zoning change, which meant a year and a half of carrying costs on the note, you know, those, those type of elements. And I just want to say one more time, I'm going to try to be really good about not saying things like, you know, we want to do this in everywhere, we want to give it all away, we want to do, but, you know. I think we're all acknowledging that this is, there's nuance to this conversation, and I don't want to lose that, that part also. I think there really is a lot more agreement here, once we really start talking about three and four units versus six and eight and 12 units, and we may be closer than we think.
That would be my hope. I appreciate getting a little bit more information on the preservation tool that was in draft three, and whether or not, because I agree with Anne, that there are multiple tools, and it could be, I mean, these are not mutually exclusive kinds of things. So if we were to map missing middle, one decision is whether we do it by right, and whether we're talking about right for a house form, or something larger than a house form. Another question would be, is the same time we're doing that in that same area, could we also have a non-zoning tool that was being used, so that even though it was an area that was getting upzoned potentially, we were trying to create stronger incentives for someone to maintain the existing home, because it got them other stuff to be able to use? And that might be a way to mitigate the pressures associated with, with upzoning, if that was the decision that was, was made. But that, the conversation we're having here about missing middle housing is also question number three, which was missing middle, and we may have just had the conversation about that element in both of them. I don't know if there's other items in number three that were not addressed in the conversation that we had. Greg?
You know, Councilmember Garza and I posted, Mayor Potem Garza and I posted what our criteria, tried to come up with a set of criteria to lay out some expectations for where missing middle housing would be mapped. So I'm interested in what people's thoughts were there. And then we laid out what transition, what transition zone length would generally look like, which comes out to about two lots, and up to seven lots or so, depending on the set of whether you met all the criteria, whether you were on transit and in the urban core, and have street connectivity, and are high opportunity. That, in a normal sort of perpendicular street situation, means the transition zone is between, you know, a lot or two deep and one 13th of a mile deep. In, in the kinds of neighborhoods where your lots face parallel streets, then it's somewhere between 400 feet deep and a quarter mile deep. And we try to provide those illustrations for people. So, you know, when we talk about how much missing middle, we're actually talking about mapping. I think, you know, one, one baseline option is to make sure that we are allowing more units just generally on lots. But if we're talking about this in-between missing middle, something in-between adding a unit behind you, and really the RM1 or R4 zone, we wanted to sort of lay out what we meant by transition zones off the corridor, because the mayor's original document didn't specify quite how deep it would go. It asked for council criteria to talk about how deep it should go. So I don't know if everybody has a copy of this, but I'm just interested in, in whether people thought the criteria was good or bad, whether two to seven lots was too, too many lots or too few lots for people. You know, we're pretty limited in the number of people we can talk to.
Okay, so let's put that question on the floor. Allison?
I had a question for Mr. Kassar, because I was having trouble understanding the density involved. I'm not sure I agree with the criteria or the approach, but I want to make sure that I'm understanding it before I raise any questions. So by my calculations, and from looking at the bottom, looking at the one where the streets are parallel to the corridor, it starts with RM3, then, and goes, you know, down from there, and you still end up with R3, I think, by the time you get seven lots in. Can you give me a sense of how many units we're talking about at each lot? Because if I go back to code next and look at it, it looks like it's dependent on the size of the lot. And by my calculations, which could be wrong, for 7,000 square feet, that was, you know, RM3 was 6 to 8 units, RM2 is 3 to 6 units, RM1 is 2 to 6 units, and so on. And so, you know, if you took the higher end of that, that's quite a lot, just on a 7,000 square foot lot, when, you know, the base lot is more like 5,000. I'm just having trouble translating this into unit sizes, so that I can understand it. So can you walk me through that for the one that meets all of the criteria?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, again, we didn't actually go and put RM and R4 or R3 in, on the missing middle blocks. We just put missing middle with lessening intensity, because we want to give the staff some discretion to be able to map this on lots as is, as is most appropriate, but just to really try to create a smooth transition. So what we said was, we want to represent steadily decreasing entitlements per lot. And as you mentioned, if the lot is really big behind a corridor, then an RM zone would allow significantly more units, whereas if it was just a, a standard, bigger, single-family plot, it might be eight units. And so that way, you go from a corridor, which might be an actual mid-rise or high-rise apartment, downward, and if it's, as you said, a 7,000 square foot lot, then you're really only talking about maybe a, what, did you mention RM2 or RM3 at 10 units?
I just, going off the bottom, you said, for example, a tier-four transition zone could be, that's where I got my stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you know...
Exactly, so you're talking about, so you're talking about on the back of the corridor, something way significantly lower than corridor zoning is, you know, RM2 or RM1 is way less than MS zoning. And depending on the size of the lot, you get more or fewer units, but I think in your example, you had mentioned a lot that would handle 10. You have to take in non-zoning requirements into account whether, about what you're talking about, but eventually you get down into R4, which allows four, and then potentially more units with a bonus, and then R3, which allows three. So that would be the longest, that would be the longest transition zone, and frankly, in this case, we're talking about three zones scaled, and maybe that mid, mid-level missing middle zone, and then four lots zoned in the house scale missing middle zone, which is R4, R3.
So RM3 allows for 60 feet. That's the same height allowed in a corridor today, and so we're getting that pretty far in, as far as I'm understanding this. And again, I'm trying to translate the example, and maybe the example is just an example, but the example is what the community is going to be looking and trying to understand what the proposal is before us. So, I mean, I think we also need to understand when we're talking about missing middle, and we're talking about the transition. When we move from the earlier conversation, we now have to talk about, okay, what are the heights involved, and how do those relate to what's existing? We also need to talk about impervious cover. There's quite a bit of different impervious cover numbers. If you start to look at, RM4 has impervious cover of 90%, RM3 is 70% versus RM1 of 45%. These are off the corridors. You know, my experience lately off the corridors, if you're in a rainstorm, is there flooding, and you're driving through two feet of water, because we don't have the infrastructure for what's already there. And so I just, there's a lot packed into this, and I'm trying to, I don't fully understand what I would be even voting for, and trying to explain this to my constituents who are asking about it. And so there's a lot of dimensions here, and I know the goal is meant well to try and get the housing, but there are lots of knock-ons for other goals that I think we need to understand as well.
So as I was looking at it, and I handed out something, too, that I just would throw out on the table, too. I begin with the premise that I want us to have more density and supply along the corridors, especially the activity centers and corridors, and in the centers. That's where I began. What I had, and the thing that I originally laid out a couple weeks ago, was that we would then build a transition behind that, and would be a transition area behind that, so that you don't go from that density that we're, I think we've all agreed we want to put on the corridor immediately to a single-family home. So then the question is, how do you transition from one to the other? I would hope that when we were mapping it out, we would take into account the kinds of things that you've listed. So I like the things that you've listed. You know, it's a transit-centered corridor, is it in a place where there seems to be demand for that kind of missing middle intensity? Does it have the street connectivity we want? Is it in a high-opportunity area? I also appreciate that you allow not only the things that would increase that transition, but the things that would decrease that transition. So you specifically listed that if it covered more than half of a neighborhood, that you wouldn't do that, which is a nod toward the concern that people were raising in some neighborhoods where they had a corridor on two sides. And if you... And if you went a quarter mile in from each of the two sides, you had effectively taken the whole neighborhood. So I appreciate that you've suggested some measure of contact sensitivity with that. So I like that, too. I will tell you that when I was thinking about how deep this would go into the neighborhood, I wasn't thinking seven lots. And I'm not sure that I have a planning reason for that. I have just a kind of a culture shock to that. It goes back to what I said at the beginning. I think that we're trying to both do something here that drives the goals that we want in terms of housing and affordability and supply, but also trying to do it in a way that feels right for where we are. So I took the list that you have and what I handed out was kind of some changes to what it was that you had had in your deal. So what I've handed out has Greg's amendments to the base document in blue and then my amendments to Greg's, what Greg had in red. And basically what this did is it deleted the line that said this is going to be two to seven lots, although I think it's, there's certainly a range. I'm not sure that what I described below ends up with seven lots. I think it ends up with less than seven lots. But it keeps the criteria that you had in terms of what you've shown on the chart. That makes sense to me, that it shouldn't be the same in all places. But it, but rather than, but it described more, I think, what the process needs to be. If I have the commercial uses on the front, then what has to happen next to it is something that's at least RM1 so it doesn't trigger compatibility, which is what we said before. It could be more than RM1, but that would depend on what's happening on the corridor. So in many corridors, RM1 is going to be the appropriate thing to have behind it. But I might have such intensity on the corridor by virtue of what it's being zoned that the appropriate backing or fronting or adjacent use would be RM2 or something else. That would be toward the top of what Greg was talking about in his scale. So it says that we have adjacent to it the RM1 or higher, so it doesn't trigger the compatibility. It pays off of whatever it was that was the density on the corridor. And then it has a couple of statements that I think make sense, that transitions in scale occur mid-block, not across a street, and that parcels on opposite sides of the street generally are mapped with the zones of a similar scale so that the transition's happening in the backyard as opposed to the fronting street where homes are looking at each other. It would have the transition areas stepping down to residential house scale as quickly as possible. So you're trying to get down to the R4 as soon as it makes sense to be able to do that. Obviously, you're not going to put an R4 next to an RM3 kind of unit, so, but you try to do it as quickly as you can with these other parameters. And then R4 being the least intense zone within a transition area, so that would mark then the end of the transition area. And as I played with various things, it seemed to me that while it had it more than one lot or two lots, in many cases, it was less than seven lots in every one of the ones that I mapped. So the intrusion into the neighborhood was somewhere in that middle. But it wasn't keyed on the number of lots, it was keyed on these kind of design principles. I don't know if this kind of thing makes sense at all or is something that generally speaking you could apply, but that's where kind of my head is right now. The one thing that I had that related, that I spoke before, was H that talked about the missing middle housing and affordability. That language probably isn't very clear and that's because that issue's not very clear in my head yet either.
Quick question, Mayor.
Could I speak?
So, yeah, Kathy and then Ann and then Leslie.
I just have a question on your terminology. You, in F on page two, it says C attached exhibits. And which exhibits are those?
That was Greg's attachment. But Greg's attachment, he was mapping what was B, C, D, and E and F, which were his language. I then added the points GHI, JK, LM, which obviously are not mapped onto Greg's deal.
So this continues forward?
I would recommend that that, in your left hand, be modified so as to incorporate the kinds of provisions that I've put in red, which I don't think would, which I, which don't show, I don't, would not show the same incursion that Greg's maps show.
I have a lot of different responses to this, but I think the one I would start with is that, you know, we started out with a memo asking us to provide some policy direction to the city manager, and this seems to go well beyond providing direction. I mean, this is actually, this is a level of specificity that is actually getting into the mapping. And if we want to do that, I would just request that we take, we take some time to actually talk about it. You know, this is, this is like a multiple-hour conversation, even trying to understand what your map shows, what your revisions show, and then actually testing it against some real neighborhoods. I don't know if you've done this, I don't know if you've done this in any areas. I can tell you, just off the top of my head, a whole lot of the areas I represent are going to fall into that category where it's got a corridor on either side and you've, in essence, mapped the entire area as a transition zone. I understand there's a provision that that shouldn't happen, but then what does that look like? I mean, how, I'm not really sure that between today and Thursday I could explain to my constituents how this operates because, for one thing, I don't, I don't understand myself how it operates. And I can spend more time figuring it out and will, but it's, it's very challenging to be able to do that between today and Thursday. So I would ask if we're going to contemplate this or a revision to it, that we not, that this not be Thursday's conversation, that this be, that we prolong the conversation to another time. I think providing some general direction about transition zones is kind of what the city manager asked us to do, mapping it and providing calculations for how that changes lot by lot by lot is pretty in-depth work. We may be up to it, but if we're going to start writing the code ourselves, then I think we're going to need a little more time.
Ann?
Well, a couple of things. First off, you know, thank you, Councilmember Kesar. I appreciate you making, you know, an effort at bringing forward some thoughts. So I appreciate that effort, but my concern is similar to what Councilmember Tovo is mentioning. There's, whatever level of criteria we bring forward, we need to understand the impact. And this, there's no, there's no data here to tell me what the impact will be and much less going to, you know, citywide, much less trying to figure out what it does for my neighborhoods. It also is new and that may be a good thing, but it doesn't track what the planning commission did on transition zoning. What the planning commission did was suggest that they map, that you map density directly on the corridor and the senators, centers, that you use a flum on the transitions and then you consider other areas. And then they also suggested a list of 13 criteria to consider when you're considering the character of the corridor and the surrounding neighborhoods. So they did a, they went into much more depth in understanding the differences across, you know, across the community. And so if we're going to put criteria, which we would need to do at some point in terms of transition zones, there's a lot more complexity than these four criteria. And I think these, it's not that I'm saying these four wouldn't be the one, it's just that, well, okay, what about things like blocks that aren't perpendicular or parallel? What about places where you have residential blocks sided by MS, RMU zone lots, where they're essentially wrapped around? What about places where you have, you know, localized flooding? What about areas that are bound by other zones, uses, or environmental features? Point being, my point is simply this, is that those, that's the level of detail. So I would much rather say to staff that we, we can say we want transition zones, ask staff to bring us back options, spend a lot more time to actually analyze the impact, both in terms of are we getting what we want? I mean, and acknowledging that we want more missing middle, we want, that we want three things, more missing middle, more missing middle with affordable and affordable. And so I think the level of analysis is necessary, and I don't see how we could possibly vote on this kind of criteria on Thursday.
Mayor.
Leslie. And then Jimmy.
Thanks. And just to tag on to what Councilmember Kitchen is saying, the question was, to what extent should the LDC encourage more missing middle housing types? And then it names some. And so to the extent that we're trying to answer that, I think, I think that's the question that we're answering is, to what extent should the new code encourage more missing middle housing types? And to that end, and that's pretty simple, I think we have a lot of consensus around the dais that we'd like to see more. And to that end, on page three, number one, C, I'd like to insert cooperatives in the bullet that talks about reduced site development standards for missing middle housing options. And then it enumerates them, such as duplexes, multiplexes, townhomes. I'd like to insert co-ops. And then it goes on to say, and cottage courts to facilitate development of additional units. We've had some presentations about cooperatives. We know that it's innovative housing types, it can serve all ages, could be particularly intriguing as a housing solution for our seniors who are looking both for affordability and community that's not like a retirement home. So I'd like for us to explore co-ops in the income restricted housing category as well, if staff would add that in there. And my staff and I are also working with cooperative advocates to see what might work. So just the one edit that I'd like to offer up for question three, since we're just talking about to what extent should the code encourage more missing middle, I think we've answered that. And we're looking for more, and I would like to include specifically cooperatives in the enumerated list.
Jimmy?
So on the document you handed out, Mayor, that, which is question four, right? Compatibility standards. I do have a couple of concerns kind of with the way this lays out. The one that really jumps out to me is parcels on opposite side of streets should be mapped with zones of similar scale. I mean, the street itself is a buffer, so I don't know why we would not want to leverage that. And it'll be scarier for folks if it's across a fence versus across the street, I would imagine, because when I hear folks talk about their concerns with the compatibility, it's about scale of the built environment. And so the street is a buffer, so I wouldn't want to do that. But I think at a higher level here, I want staff to solve this problem for us in a way that we communicate what we're trying to achieve. What Councilmember Harper-Madison and Renteria and I kind of laid out as an option, as an example, is to define the entitlement that you are looking for either by right or by bonus at the corridor level and then stepping it back from there, not being so prescriptive that we're saying in this moment that if it's parallel or perpendicular or where, is just as a general guideline and then letting the staff go in and find the exceptions to the rule that will then drive the conversation. So, I mean, there's a lot of really interesting ideas in here, but I almost am a little worried that it's a little too specific at this stage when I prefer us to say, you know, we need a certain level of intensity on corridors, especially ones on the transit priority network, and it should gracefully scale back from there. Staff should help us solve for the process in which that occurs. And I also struggle with citing specific zoning categories from draft three because I think, you know, Councilmember Alter kind of was pulling that out and saying, well, that says this height and that says that height. And I may not like the way those zones are defined in draft three. So, yeah, I'm struggling with a little bit of specificity on this one.
And for me, I think part of it goes to what is it that we're trying to achieve? My hope is, is that we'll figure out what we can do right to be able to have something done by the end of the year. My preference would be we spend next year focused on transportation and on the transit issue that's coming up. And I think we have the best chance of being able to maximize that opportunity if we're able to move past this. So Jimmy, I think one of the things I was trying to figure out was, we could, and at the very least, we need to answer the five questions managers ask us to answer. So under any scenario, we should answer those five questions. And then beyond that, to the degree that we can give him direction, to the degree that we can, we may not be able to or to different levels, we should do that so that when the maps and the code come back to us in, or come back to the public in August or September or wherever they come back, there are the least number of surprises. People knew what that was going to say, and they could point back to this moment and this time and whatever a majority of us thought was the right way to go. Only because I'm concerned that if we leave, if we don't give direction, then we're stepping back into the challenge that we had with staff before where we really didn't give a lot of direction and then staff was trying to come up with something. And now having been through it so much and had so many conversations over so many years, if we're able to give better direction and could do that so that when the maps came out, there was as little surprise in the maps as possible, that increases the chances then that we'll be able then to move to the next stage of the process and be able to work through that so that it gets to us in a timely way for us while we're together as a group able to accomplish that. So I understand the challenge and I'm on both ways of that. I don't think we should give any more prescription than is right and we feel comfortable doing. I'd like to see us give as much as we could, given that, because I think that will make the backend of the process work better. And part of what I handed out here was in response to what Greg handed out where I was saying, well, I hear that, but there might be some other directions that wouldn't end up with the same, same result. So I wrote those down. And then with respect to the whole neighborhood getting mapped, I think that, I mean, it's real clear that no one today has talked about even with two corridors on both sides of a neighborhood, that it would cover the whole neighborhood. In fact, it's explicitly said that that would not happen. So no one's discussed a scenario where that would. I don't know exactly what that would look like, and it seems to me that really the key indicator on that is what goes on the corridors in those areas. Because we're starting out with a premise collectively as a group that we want to be able to achieve density and more supply along the corridors. And then whatever happens behind the corridor is in part dependent and mostly dependent on what happens on the corridor because what's behind it then is the transition to the single-family neighborhood. And so I think that it's not just the transition area that has to be decided with respect to those neighborhoods, it's what happens on the corridor. Because I think, I think things begin to key off of that.
And to the Mayor Protem's point, these are neighborhoods that are already some, including missing middle, that are not necessarily single-family neighborhoods, and I think it's important to remember that, too. We're not just talking about mansions to the interior of neighborhoods. Some of these interiors already have two and three and four unit kind of missing middle stuff.
Okay. Ann?
I just want to reiterate that, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying, I appreciate what we're saying in terms of doing as much as we can right now. And I appreciate that. And Mayor, I think you pointed that out, but we don't really know what we're doing with this, with this criteria. And it may, it may be good criteria, Councilmember Kesar, it may be good. And I'm willing to say, I'm certainly willing to say that this could be the best criteria, but I don't have any data about how it will impact. And I can name a number of circumstances that, like I just named out from the planning commission, that don't seem to fit in here, but if I'm reading this right, and maybe I'm not reading it right, but if I'm reading this right, this says to me everywhere that you meet one of these four, then you'll be mapped this way. And so the question I'm asking is, well, what about all these other exceptions that the planning commission recognized? And suggested that these things need to be considered and they may require a different approach? So I could certainly, you know, support something that said to staff, please help us figure out the appropriate criteria. Here's one way that you might consider it, here's other ways that you might consider it. I'm happy to give them things like this as a suggested approach to consider, but I'm not prepared to vote on one approach, particularly when I don't have an analysis of how that impacts. And so that's what my concern is. And Mayor, you mentioned you don't want to be surprised, and I agree with that. But if I just go and map this, I will be surprised because I don't know what it, I don't know how it works on the ground right now. So I think the more prudent thing is to take the kind of approach that Councilmember Flanagan is suggesting, which is we be real clear what we want on the corridor, we be real clear that we want real clear that we want transition areas, we be real clear that, you know, some of the criteria to look at for transition areas, we can even suggest some things that staff looks at. But I don't see how we're prepared to choose what those transition criteria are, particularly if we're going to vote tomorrow, I mean, on Thursday. And I'm not even going to mention the fact that the community hasn't had a chance to tell us what they think about this.
Greg.
And I included this exhibit not as direction, right? The direction is in the mayor's document. I included the exhibit more so that people could have an idea of what it would generally look like, what this direction would generally look like, as trying to extend some level of visualization for people. And I looked at the Planning Commission's level of criteria and was kind of stuck between people saying, if I put all of the Planning Commission criteria, many of which I really thought were great, that I'd be way too prescriptive. But then, so I didn't want to be way too prescriptive, at the same time, I didn't want to include nothing, because then I feared that people would say, well, we're just sending the staff off without direction, and who knows what it is we're going to get back. So I'm just, since the question of missing middle criteria was put before us, I tried to have some general criteria, and then an illustration of what it could look like, but it didn't mean to say, map it exactly like this. It's just, when we say, between two and seven lots, and generally smoothening down off of a corridor, this is kind of what that looks like. And I, of course, would want the staff to know where creeks are, and to know where the streets are kind of diagonal instead of straight, and to give them that work to do. So it's really just an honest attempt of trying to do, you know, to just say, let's kick off a small transition zone this year. And in part, I also wrote it with the not impacting the majority of the neighborhood, and at two to seven lots, to give people a sense that this is actually a pretty meager transition zone compared to some of the things that actually were even in draft one in some neighborhoods. In part, just to show, look, this actually would not be that big of a change in many areas. I mean, in many, many of my neighborhoods that are off of some of Austin's major corridors and major activity transit networks, you've got 50, 40, 70 houses deep off the corridor. And so this would say, you know, if you hit all the criteria, this would take up one eight-lot block, and leave the rest to be dealt with in the future, or to be dealt with with our ADU and parking policies. So again, this was just, I'm sort of torn between being too prescriptive and not giving enough, and wanting to show people generally what we mean, or not showing people what we mean. And so this was trying to sort of shoot the middle by giving some direction and having a picture.
Well, what is...
Let's give her a few chances.
Oh, and with that, one thing I scribbled down to mention but never did, was that my conception of this, but it's not written, so it's not, so I'd be happy to add it, is that obviously if something is missing middle zoned, to just leave it that missing middle zone, under this mapping, so as to not say, let's get rid of missing middle with other missing middle, let's just leave it. If it's missing middle zone, then that's great, leave it missing middle zone.
Allison.
So I just want to say, I appreciate you putting forward something, this is not an easy task that's before us, and I know a lot of work went into that. I think what we're trying to do is understand what you're proposing, and that's not to suggest that there was any, you know, the intent was there, and you were trying to move us forward. As I look at the things before us, and I look at where we're going and what's being said, you know, I appreciate the mayor's comments of, you know, let's focus on what our goal is and what we're trying to achieve. And I will look more carefully between now and Thursday at what you produced, Mayor Adler, but I'm inclined to support more of what you put forward in the first place, which seems the simplest to me, which is, you get the compatibility not to be an issue on the corridor by having a one-lot-in transition zone, and then you add Anne's concerns about context sensitivity. If we find, as we explore this further, that there are particular areas where that's just not going to work, like some of the diagonal streets and other things where there's concern. And then we have a planning process that's focused on the transition areas with a very short timeline for when that happens, and then you can have some of the discussions that need to be had for those transition areas that can be very specific. I have parts of my district that have commercial that goes in a couple of blocks right next to where there's, you know, residential. And what I would want to do on this block would be very different than what I want to do on that block. And the blanket approach would miss important opportunities, because we have diagonal streets that are doing kind of weird kinds of things. And then what I would say also is, part of what, if we do the code right, we will have, is we will have zones that we don't have now to do things that we want to do. And it's very different to come in and ask for a zoning that gets you to a zoning category that exists, than to have to create a CO and do all that negotiation and whatever. So the transition areas, we could think about, and I have to, I haven't vetted this with staff at all, so I don't know if this is possible, but you could have some kind of expedited permitting process if you're in a transition area and you want to create housing. You get to go through a process that's a little bit faster, so you get to know what it is, but it still goes through all the public process, which is, I think, part of what people are concerned about. And you also have the planning process that would be going on. So, you know, to the extent that we are trying to move forward, of the things that I've heard, that sort of combination is the one that I would be most comfortable with, that recognizes that there's value in planning, there's value in the public process. But we do have a need and a broad agreement that we want to have entitlements increased on the corridor so that we get more housing. Now, I personally only want those entitlements if there's some affordability involved, but as we're going through this process, I think that might be direction that would be easy to understand, without all sorts of different ways that you go off in lots of weird directions. And then for missing middle, we could focus on some of those things that we know and that we agree on. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of agreement of, we have ability to do, you know, from fourplexes down, but they're not happening. And so, what are the things that we could unleash that would allow those to happen more organically? Because I think there's people who want to do those even where they are, but it's not a matter of increasing the zoning, because they'd still have those other constraints there. So that's just where I'm thinking, where we are right now, and how I'm thinking about things as we move forward. I appreciate the additional changes that you're bringing forward here. I want this code to be simple, I want the direction to be simple, and that seems simpler to me.
Kelly.
So, sorry about this, but we moved on from number two before I had a chance to ask my questions about some of this, and we can talk about it today or talk about it Tuesday. But I've highlighted on the draft that I handed out, one, I'll just highlight a couple of the other changes. I'm suggesting that we change the language from the granting of new entitlements in areas currently are susceptible to limit displacement and disincentivize redevelopment of housing. I think we don't want to do that with any of our existing multifamily residential developments, so I've just changed that language to especially...
We're reading, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Question two, one, B, three. So I've said especially in areas currently are susceptible, but generally, I think we want to reduce displacement and disincentivize the redevelopment of existing housing, especially multifamily residential development, not just older. Anyway, it just seemed to me, we don't want to distinguish between existing and older, and we also want that to apply to other areas. And then I've highlighted A, because I'm not following what's happening there. I'm not understanding the point there, about the non, we've talked about non-zoning regulations, so I kind of understand what we're talking about there.
So...
Do we mean revised? Non-zoning regulations will be revised, but then it wasn't clear to me how the prioritization of non-zoning regulations for trans, I'm not making sense of those sentences.
So I think that this point was the one that was discussed, where in the formulation of draft three, we had different sections, non-zoning sections, that were drafted independent of one another, but focused on that particular subject matter. And each one of them is a really good policy within that area. But what we found when we tested it was that when we overlaid all of those things on the same track, you could no longer achieve what was even allowed for under existing zoning. So all those things together, and it's impossible, I think, then for staff to pick out the favorite among the children that they have, because all of those things are important. So what this was, was a paragraph that was intended to say that ultimately, as decision-makers, we have to set priorities and give direction, and we're really the only ones that can do that. And that the first priority that was established here was, we're going to get higher yield density and supply along the corridors. We're going to get that done. So as I look at how I overlay then the non-zoning stuff, if, I want to do it all. But to the degree doing it all means I'm sacrificing my primary goal, then I have to reflect that in the priority. I don't ask for everything that I would have otherwise asked for on that lot, because I've set the density and the supply and the corridor highest. And then the language said, but with that, there are some things among the other non-zoning things that would be prioritized among others. And one of those is right-of-way acquisition, because if I don't get the right-of-way acquisition I need on the streets, then it's forever gone, and I'm not going to be able to ultimately build out transit or mobility system I want. So it had that. It had traffic mitigation and transportation demand management, because that traffic and affordability, really big concerns in the city. And then it had drainage and water quality. Someone had also recommended prioritizing other things, too. And at some point, as we began to list everything, then we haven't prioritized anything anymore, because we've listed everything all over again. In talking through, I know that tree protection was a big one, and I thought that heritage tree preservation was probably something that could still be kept in here without compromising the corridor development, which is why I put that back. But that was the issue in that paragraph.
And I appreciate that explanation, I sort of understand some of it, but I'm still having a little trouble making these work together. Okay, so I'm with you on the first sentence. The next, we're saying the prioritization of non-zoning regulations will be for transportation right-of-way acquisition. In other words, if there is, if it comes down to higher unit yields or right-of-way acquisition?
Then that becomes a really difficult thing, because those are equal, and probably we could give more definition than that, make more direction than that.
I just don't understand, I'm just having trouble understanding how these, how the second sentence, what the relationship, like, are we saying higher unit yields is our main goal?
Correct.
But we're going to balance that against our need for right-of-way acquisition, for traffic mitigation, and transportation demand management?
Drainage and water quality.
Drainage and water quality issues?
Yes.
And parkland dedication?
Well, the more things, the more things we list, the more things we list, the less direction we're giving.
Yeah, I get that point, but is that what you're saying? Like, we need to balance our goal for higher unit against these other priorities?
That's correct. And to the degree that I can get the other things that are not listed as a priorities, and still get the density that I need, then I want to get those things, too. But if I have a forced choice in those situations, this was saying, as council, we should probably give direction to staff on what we would pick in a forced-choice situation.
Okay. If I could just suggest, like, we, maybe that second sentence just be a little bit rewritten to explain, but what is, how does parkland dedication fit into that? Because you would, I mean, it's not taking up proper, it's not taking up space on the track that you're developing.
It could be taking up space on the track that we're developing.
Oh, I see, okay.
And parkland and open space and civic space, I mean, you have all spaces.
Okay.
And some might impact or not impact to different degrees. And there may be ways to say, if it's a corridor track, you can do a fee in lieu in situations where you wouldn't be allowed to do a fee in lieu, but in this case, because it's the corridor track and we're trying to get that, we're going to allow that more. It's just trying to give direction, because I think one of the problems we had with the last code was, when they actually got tested, we had so many things we were asking of those corridor tracks, it could no longer, the corridor tracks could no longer to deliver the supply and the density that we wanted the corridors to give to us for transportation and affordability reasons.
All right, thank you.
Jimmy.
So where I got confused on that same document is how we turned it around to say more specifically, which parts of the regulation would we consider varying in order to achieve these objectives? And so the way that we laid it out in our document was options to allow some level of administrative variance for some building form regulations, like setback height building cover, to help maximize the shared community values of housing, trees, parks, flood protection. So I'm not sure that what we're saying is that we want to sacrifice drainage, what we're saying is that that's one of the things we don't want to sacrifice, that these other regulations, that that may be the place for variance in order to achieve both unit yield and flood protection and trees and parks. And so, that, because there's a couple of different ways to read it, and that's how I think we put it together. And then the other thing that we added was feasibility of how regulations can overlap, so that we're maximizing the opportunities where the drainage requirements also serve as the vegetative buffer, also serve as the open space, in areas where that, in ways that can be safely done, and et cetera, et cetera. And that's kind of how we laid it out, things a little clearer.
What page are you on, on yours?
It's page three, C, I, three and four, I, I, and IV.
It's question three, C.
Yeah.
So I feel pretty strongly that we need to keep the parkland pieces in there. Most of our corridors are parkland deficient, it's one of our top 10 goals to create access. The land requirement doesn't really kick in until you get a certain size, and at some point, even when you have that certain size, just for the dogs, you need to have a space, whether you want them for the people or not. And so I think we, once that land is gone, you can't get the parkland. It's not a requirement if it's affordable housing, and so that's an incentive for folks to have more affordable housing as part of that. So I feel pretty strongly on that. I've heard this comment that we ended up with draft three with something where things couldn't be built on the corridors. I'm just wondering if someone can provide some of those models, because I haven't seen those either, because we ditched draft three, or they were never shown to me. But I'm just, I'd like to play around with them a little bit more and better understand how these, you know, some real scenarios where these are interacting and this is happening. And I don't know, I don't know who prepared those, which groups did those, or if it was something that staff did. I've heard that in the ether, but I haven't actually seen the examples, and it would be really helpful. I don't know, Mayor, if your staff has access to those, just like to...
I think we all do, we could work with staff to get them. I think that AIA had done some of that work. There was some charrettes that had been done, that I understood that those were the conclusions.
Yeah, I just haven't, you know, I know that's what's been said, I just haven't seen the, to be able to understand how that would play out in practice.
So can you get to her?
What was the question, I'm sorry?
The testing work that was done on the other code that demonstrated that there were some suggestions that we weren't able to achieve what we wanted to on the corridors because of the overlapping, otherwise non-zone requirements. If you could get that to everybody, that'd be helpful.
Sure, we can look for that documentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anne?
Well, just two things. I think I took a similar approach to what Councilmember Flanagan was saying in regard to the prioritization. So, kind of similar to your language, but a little different, so. But the second thing is, I wanted to go back to the discussion of the transition zone mapping, because I did have a question for Councilmember Kassar, just in understanding. So, one of the things that we talked, that you were putting forward was the street connectivity, and the language, I think, was a well-connected street grid. Can you help me understand a little bit more about, is that tied back to something that would be defined for me, or just tell me what you had in mind?
Mayor, so, we tried to take the, you know, looking at what Planning Commission talked about, and what community members talked about, where people, what people thought qualified them for more, better for missing middle or worse. And some folks said, well, if you are a certain number of lots in, but the streets curve and switch back, or there's a creek and you can't actually get to the street. We wanted to make sure that we were addressing, that we want, if indeed part of what we're trying to do is to get... trying to do is to get more family-friendly, walkable, missing middle near transit that people can walk to, then more walkability and street connectivity, or whatever that set of words is, would make sense. You know, we wanted something that could fit easily on this chart. So if it's more walkable neighborhoods where we, where missing middle housing traditionally was a housing type until we oftentimes outlawed it, that's what we were trying to get it, steer more towards, while recognizing we still want it all over the city. So even if there isn't great street connectivity, then that would mean you just get a little bit less missing middle with less intense zones.
So was that like working, thinking in terms of the corridor being the main area for density and working back from it? Was it, does that mean well-connected to the corridor? Is that what you were thinking?
Yes, because, for example, there might be, you know, some more suburban-style developments in neighborhoods where you have really one collector street, and then a variety of arterials, and then a little branch street that comes back towards the corridor, to really give staff the ability to not go and necessarily map that, that little street. Because, just because it, as the bird, as the crow flies, might be near the corridor, but may not be well-connected enough to be the place where missing middle is mapped. But instead, for missing middle to be better mapped to where there is better street connectivity to the transit.
Okay, then I have one last question, if I may. So you had, I think this was in yours, or, I'm getting confused, but if you, Mayor, if you picked up the same thing that was in yours, you're reflecting that vulnerable areas, as in the gentrification study? I had been thinking in terms of susceptible areas, because I've been thinking that the gentrification study has sort of some tiers, and that it would be important to pull in the susceptible areas, because those are the areas that are identified as at risk, if I'm using the right words, at risk for gentrification. And that they might be the areas that we actually have, not that we actually have, but that we might need to go to that level, as well as the vulnerable and the already gentrified areas. So I would be, was there a reason why you didn't go to susceptible?
I think many times the vulnerable areas were overlapped both of those, but I can go and check. I think the term susceptible was oftentimes the census tracts that were adjacent to those that were currently gentrified. And I think oftentimes vulnerable overlapped with both the dynamic and the susceptible tracts next to it. So I think it is, it does usually catch both, but let me check. And frankly, I think vulnerable and susceptible is also a fine, from what I remember from the map, also a fine categorization.
Yeah, I would think you would want to do both.
And in part, the idea is that in these areas where oftentimes land values have been lowered because of a variety of historical injustices and inequities, when you have a, we tend to get the housing stock quickly that we zone. You know, if you, if you put, when you put higher-level density zoning in some, you know, in some parts, for example, of Councilmember Rintory's district, or the southern parts of mine, you might quickly get that housing capacity, where we understand that when an area is more expensive and oftentimes higher opportunity, you might have MF3 zoning that where single-family houses have sat, and it's been MF3 or MF4 zoning for a long time. So that's part of the reason that we, if we want to have housing supply across the city, to make sure we address those injustices with, yeah, as we have here, ramp down in susceptible or vulnerable, and more if it's higher opportunity, well-connected to transit, et cetera.
Okay. It just occurred to me that it ought to be not just vulnerable, it ought to be susceptible.
I think vulnerable and susceptible is generally what we meant.
Okay. Let me let someone else.
Kathy?
I had a question, actually, Anne, for you regarding the city-led testing. Let me also say that I think the additional language that you've added about remodeling, about, and this actually gets back to the point that you made earlier, Councilmember Rintory, about making remodeling easier. I think that's a, I think that generally, let me step back and say, you know, one of the things that I think-
Are you reading at question two? I'm sorry?
Yeah, sorry, still on question two.
Okay.
You know, one of the, one of the things that I heard again and again out there in the community about Code Next, and I think one of the real missed opportunities in the drafts that we, all of the drafts we saw, were on preservation tools generally. And I think you mentioned the preservation tool that ended up in draft three, but I hope that we can really come up with some more, some more strategies that other communities use to prevent, to prevent demolition, to work toward preserving, preserving the existing housing that we have, especially when it's providing naturally occurring affordable housing. But C, I thought, so I thought C's provision was very good. B, with regard to the testing, I think follows along with what I was trying to do, but is better language, but I wasn't clear on the timing. So I had added in some language about when the testing should be done, and I said prior to council approval. But if you've said when you think the testing should be done, it's not clear to me-
Prior to council approval.
Sorry?
Prior to council approval.
Can you help me see where that is?
I'm not sure that it said that, but I would have assumed that testing happened before it came to us with the-
I think the resolution we passed said prior to.
Okay, okay. So I think, good, then I would just suggest that that be in that, in that provision.
Okay.
Where you're talking about.
Okay.
About that. On a slightly different subject, we're getting some calls and texts and other things about whether or not there would be testimony about-
And by approval, I mean approval in the fall, right, before we adopt something in the fall. My hope is that the testing happens before it goes to the Planning Commission.
Great. Anyway, I just want to clarify that we are having public test, it's my understanding that we are having public testimony on the land development code on Thursday. And so I don't know if you all are getting calls and texts and whatnot, but I know my office is, so I just wanted to verify that.
As we announced last meeting.
Do we have a time certain for this conversation?
No, my hope is we'll start it as early as we can. You know, it's an agenda, I think, that lends itself to us being able to start earlier than later. It's going to be a lot for us to discuss, too.
Could, oh, I'm sorry.
There was, in the last section on parking?
I have more, one more thing on compatibility.
Go ahead.
We've talked a lot about compatibility as it relates to the zoning, but I also, I wanted to call people's attention to the fact that I had suggested that we need to say more with regard to the non-zoning aspects of compatibility. And so I'll just call your attention to language about standards related to noise, uses, utility screening, trash, loading and pickup, and those kinds of, and shielded lighting. So I think currently we don't have as clear a direction in those regards as we need to. So wanted to include that. And then I also wanted to, I'm looking at page five right now, under code text. I also wanted to include green infrastructure related to tree canopy along corridors and centers to enhance walkability and curb heat island effect, that the instruction, or the direction to staff being to include those green infrastructure items. That's at the bottom of page five.
Okay. Anything else in compatibility or missing middle housing? Paige, Jess, if you want to?
I just wanted to quickly thank Councilmember Kassar and Mayor Proton Garza for the diagram that they had worked up. I know that that probably took a lot of effort. But as we talk about the need for more housing, not just affordable housing, but more stock in general, we've always talked about building up density along corridors and putting more missing middle into transition zones. And I think what we've been working on does exactly that, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question, suggestion, request about language. I noticed that both you and Councilmember Kassar sort of transitioned into using terminology from draft three of Code Next, as opposed to what's in our current code. So when somebody said RM earlier, I had to look it up, because I didn't know what it was. And so I want to make certain that, you know, we're very consistent with language. So use MF as opposed to, or SF, whatever the thing is, as opposed to using the Code Next draft three. It's almost as though the assumption is we are starting with Code Next draft three, in which case, I've already expressed my opposition to that. And until we, as a body, agree that that's our starting point, I'd like for us to use the current language that's in our current code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Or even just to describe it qualitatively.
Absolutely.
To say what it is, so someone doesn't know what SF3 is, we just describe. I think that's a really good point.
I think that would be very helpful, both for the sake of being consistent, and two, for our constituents and stakeholders to be able to follow along with the conversation. Thank you.
Anything else on compatibility or missing middle housing? Go to parking. Leslie? Leslie first, and we'll come back.
I wanted to check with Councilmember Kitchen if her 3B, if she wanted to bring up anything on 3B under compatibility. Question four, 3B, it's about the required density bonus program participation in order to unlock additional height above 65 feet.
That goes back to some of our earlier conversation about connecting the entitlements to increased affordability. And my suggestion there was above the 65 feet. I think that we, if we're, if we're understanding correctly, we were taking that from, I believe it was a Planning Commission recommendation. So I'll go back and double-check the source of that. But we wanted to carry forward that recommendation. So that's what that's about.
And I wanted to make sure that my comment about co-ops was also included?
Yeah.
In whatever new draft we're going to have.
Yeah, we've got, I had some language about co-ops, too, and others might, but if you want to, you should draft whatever you were thinking. Oh, I know what, I had the co-ops in the addition, too, that I have about affordability, I think.
Yeah, and I just included them in the recitation of what middle, missing middle would include.
Right.
I don't remember where the 60 feet was. Now I remember reading that now, though.
I will double-check the source of that. But I think we were keying, we were keying off one of the other recommendations.
My recollection was, I liked the concept, but putting in the 60 feet, I needed to check to see whether that universally applied, or whether that concept had different feet attached to it in different situations.
Okay, I don't, I'll check.
Okay. Kathy, do you have something else?
Yeah. In four, three, A, one, one, I've just suggested some very basic criteria for when the minimal transition zone would not occur. And at the moment, it says instances where market affordable housing is adjacent to a quarter, but I'm going to, I think it was important to call out and/or missing middle housing, as we discussed earlier. So market affordable housing and/or missing middle housing is adjacent to a quarter.
Okay.
There must be a better word than adjacent. I didn't mean immediately adjacent necessarily, but for the moment, that's where it is. Sure. So I think that, I think that as, as we kind of talked about before, if we have, if we have areas that have high levels of missing middle already, I think that I would end and/or market affordable housing immediately adjacent, I think that we should be careful about mapping a transition zone on there, that that could potentially upzone it.
I just, does adjacent mean, like, actually on the street, facing the street itself? Or are we talking about one lot away, two lots away through that?
Well, that will determine, I think that will be dependent on whether we adopt extremely, it wasn't my understanding that we were going to adopt extremely specific language for this section. And so this was responding, this was responding to the draft that we have here, where it was, where we were really talking about one lot or two lots from the quarter. This was not responding to the proposal that came a couple days ago from, from the group of colleagues who proposed two to seven units. This was really, again, back to that initial, back to that initial proposal. Can you help me understand the questions here?
I think because adjacent sounds like if you've got something that's literally on a corridor, like facing the corridor itself.
No.
Yeah, so I just got hung up on the word adjacent.
Yeah, no, that's not what I mean.
If it's in the transition, which is not, it's in the transition, I think, is the intent?
Yeah. And it was, and in particular, I was thinking about situations like the one I showed earlier, where you've got a multi, you know, a fourplex right next to that area.
Right, because they're not literally facing Guadalupe in those photos, they're off in the transition area.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe, so I'll think about that language. Thanks for airing the concern.
Okay. Anne?
In the same place that, in the same place that Councilmember Tovo just mentioned, and again, if we're just talking about the lot right next to the lot next to the corridor, that first line. So we, we've acknowledged, well, first off, I still believe that we should not go to a level of detail that we should ask the staff to help us figure out transition zones. But if we're going to start down that road, which we have done with several of these versions, I think that we have to do more than just acknowledge the place, the neighborhoods where we'd end up eating up most of the neighborhood. And then I also agree with the instance that Councilmember Tovo mentioned, but I think that we, and I, there are two suggestions that I have that are not in here right now, and so I want to speak to those for a minute. I would, I will be suggesting if we end up providing some, if the group ends up wanting to provide some additional level of detail, which, again, I don't support, but if that's where the group goes, I'm going to want to suggest that at least two of those criteria that the Planning Commission came up with, to recognize the character of an area, the residential blocks sided by MS or MU zone lots, and the orientation of blocks relative to the corridor, we have to at least think about those areas. So I'm going to suggest that those be, that language be included. The other thing is, it's something that, Mayor, you had in your first version that got taken out, and I'm not sure why it was taken out. And that was the potential to take the back portion of the deep lot mapped with a, with a different zone. And so I had added that back in, in my document. So it says that in those instances, the back portion of the deep lot should be initially mapped with a zone that does not trigger compatibility for the front portion, while providing relief for the adjacent impacted property. So basically, what that means is if you have a deep lot, and one part is, if you have a deep lot like this, and behind it, you've got a residential lot that's deep, you could do one of two things. You could zone the back part of that deep lot that's on the corridor, zone it down some so that you don't trigger compatibility. Or conversely, the residential lot that's behind it, you could zone the back lot of that residential lot, like RM1, and still keep the, still keep the single family at the front of that lot. I'm just trying to suggest that there are some circumstances around town that we need to account for, that if we just, that if we just zone the way that this is suggested, we won't be accounting for those kinds of circumstances.
And your two factors, actually, is one was orientation of the lot?
One was orientate, no, one was orientation of the blocks relative to the corridor, because we've been talking in terms of perpendicular or parallel. You've got places where you have streets that come in at an angle, and the result of that is creation of lots that are really just kind of mismatched together and aren't in a grid. So the way that the corridor butts up against the residential areas creates a lot of different kinds of lots. You even have lots that, where the residential is sided both in the back and on the side, in such a way that you could end up with, you know, really high-rise surrounding a lower house scale house. So those kinds of circumstances, I think-
And what was the first one? Orientation block?
Orientation of the block relative to the corridor.
What was the second one, then?
Residential blocks sided by, sided by MS or MU zone lots. So that's where you have both behind the lot and to the side of the lot.
Sided with a D.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on the side of. Sorry.
On the side.
Not sided.
So it's both on the back and on the side of the lot?
Yeah, and those are two, two of the criteria that the Planning Commission recognized as being special, being circumstances that required thinking about the impact on them.
And I see that one, too, and I was talking to someone that had that kind of lot. It, obviously, the impact of having commercial, when it's on both the front and the back of your lot, is exacerbated, because now it's on two sides of the lot. I haven't figured out in my head yet what the right resolution of that is, because on the one hand, it's, the impact is that much greater, so you might want it to not have the zone of the commercial lot be as high, so the impact isn't this great. On the other hand, it might be an indication of a lot that is really one that needs to be upzoned, because it's surrounded by higher intensity uses. So I'll be taking a look at that issue. So I'll be taking a look at that issue.
So meanwhile, that person who lives on that lot is just...
I understand the issue.
Mayor.
Yes.
That's, that's the point. I mean, we can't rezone the city and then say nothing will change. Sorry, let me take that back.
That's not what I'm saying.
Taking it right back, because I did the thing I didn't want to do. Taking it right back.
Thank you.
Taking, I heard it, I heard it the moment I did it. Heard it the moment I did it.
All right, so let's turn to parking.
Cut me off.
Let's go.
It's fine, it's fine.
Let's go to parking.
My point is that I was not saying that. We can talk about that later.
Let's go to parking. Anybody want to make any comments about parking? I'm in favor of this point of reducing parking within walk sheds of the kinds of things that were listed in this. I'm not sure that I'm a place yet where I'm ready just to end parking requirements. I'm at a place yet ready just to end parking requirements.
I missed that.
Anybody else want to say anything? Yes, Anne?
Mine relates, mine relates to the ADA requirements, so I had some suggestions around that. My suggestions were that the ADA compliant parking should be required for commercial and multifamily, not just for certain larger scale developments. I think it's important that we, that people with disabilities, whether it's temporary or more permanent, that they be able to park. So they be able to get to where they're going. So I don't think we should limit that to just certain larger scale developments. And so I said, "To ensure adequate number of dedicated parking spaces exist, to exist to ensure those with permanent disabilities, temporary illness, or injury, or afford a place to park near where they live, shop, or visit others." I just think it's important, that's particularly important is with an aging population, and so, that's the amendments that I had there. I didn't think that we were giving sufficient direction with regard to the ADA compliant parking.
Jimmy?
In the document that the three of us prepared, we included an element that talked about exploring options for utilizing public parking and right-of-way parking, you know, street parking, to achieve those ADA compliant, those ADA compliant parking opportunities. To be taken out of context does sound bad, right? So we don't want to take to be out of context that says we wouldn't want ADA compliant parking but for, in those, I don't think anybody's saying that. So it's a better question to say, "Well, we don't require ADA parking on single-family homes or duplexes now, so what is the universe in which we require it?" And then, can we do this in a way where the city looks at street parking and makes sure that there is sufficient ADA compliant parking to a community? While we acknowledge that eliminating parking minimums does not preclude a developer from including parking on their site, I still think there's a conversation to be had about parking maximums, or including parking in the FAR, or whatever the thing is, is I just keep, I keep going back to the Google building with 16 floors of parking, you know, just a couple of blocks away from our biggest transit center. What does that mean? And what is the context of that for the larger conversation? I'm more comfortable eliminating the parking requirements across the city, because as a practical matter, the parking's going to get built to the level the market demands it. But for a parking maximum, that's what will happen. And I think the areas where we might disagree that that will happen is where I would love to know more. So there've been a couple of comments like, "Well, there's this neighborhood street, and the neighborhood street is an area where this may not work. I kind of want to know the street, so I can go kind of look at it and be like, huh, well this is interesting, this doesn't happen in my part of town, I'd like to know more about this." So that we can get to the examples. I think parking is one where we need, we need a lot of examples to understand, where we might want to move away from something I currently support, which is eliminating minimums.
Natasha?
I do believe Anne had her light on before I did.
You can go ahead.
She has, but she's had lots of chances, and you haven't had as many.
Just something I'd like to add to, you know, the document that we put together as a matter of experience, when I was, I spent the better part of a year in a wheelchair, and I didn't realize this was the case until this was my experience. Street parking is free for people with disabilities. So if you have a handicap placard and/or license plate, you do not have to pay for street parking if it's metered parking. So just to put that out there, a lot of people don't know that, and you don't know until you need it.
Okay. Allison?
As I understand it, for the ADA part, there are some issues with parking on the street, because you don't have the spaces to get out safely. We also have a lot of corridors that don't have any parking, and so when you eliminate parking on the corridor, then there's no place for people to park to access the things that are on the corridor. So I like the way that you framed it of sort of, how do you solve for this problem, as opposed to being very prescriptive about that. I wanted to ask if Anika's here, I think I saw her come in. I want to, I raised this, I think, two weeks ago. As I recall, in the ASMP, which, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Great job. Staff was very studious about not having us eliminate parking, and I just wanted to hear a little bit from you about the reasoning behind that approach, and staff's view on that.
Sure. Anika Deas in Transportation Department, in the strategic mobility plan, we talk about parking as it applies to demand management and a congestion management tool. And so the policy that we teed up, and that was approved by council with the ASMP, is to be mindful about right sizing parking, and in a context sensitive way. And I know that that word can mean a lot of different things, but, you know, one of the things that we tried to socialize a lot with the ASMP public process was the fact that when you remove minimums, it doesn't mean that there will be no parking, and Councilmember Flanagan has pointed that out over and over again, that there are a lot of different forces, market forces, and, you know, financial institutions and things like that, that are, that will help mold what that context sensitivity looks like in addition to the built environment. And so we commit the Transportation Department staff to working with that policy to right size, and what does that mean? And a lot of cases, that doesn't mean zero parking. It will mean, there's been a lot of discussion in the past process of sidewalk, where there's sidewalks, for example, become important, what existing on-street parking, so there's a lot of different ways that we look at that context sensitivity, from both the on-street safety aspects, as well as the land use aspects. So all of that to say, there's a lot of different contexts to look at in different parts of the city, older parts of the city, newer parts of the city. But going to less parking and going to maximums instead of minimums is consistent in that right sizing policy, from our opinion at ATD. It's just a matter of exactly that, right sizing, and what does it mean for different parts of the city, in different zones, in different areas. So I hope that answered the question of the potential ambiguity of what was passed in the ASMP, and how that would apply here for consistency.
Thank you. So I don't necessarily have a solution, but I am concerned about a blanket elimination of parking within a quarter mile of quarters, and I know some versions of this have some exceptions for where it would be disruptive, and just to communicate that there are, at least in my district, that the streets that are off the corridor are very narrow, they don't necessarily have, they certainly don't have sidewalks on both sides, and some of them don't have any sidewalks. And people are already parking, because for some reason, those driveways are not as big as some other driveways, so they only have one spot, I don't know why. And so you have parking on both sides of the street, you have no sidewalk, or you, and then you can't walk, and you can't move in both directions with your cars. And so it's really, does restrict mobility, and to then create more of those in the neighborhoods, it has a chilling effect on the ability of walk. You don't want to send your kids, you know, to walk over to the park, because there's no safe place for them to walk, because when the two cars are trying to get there, it becomes an obstacle course. And then these are precisely the places where we're trying to get people to walk to transit. And so if you have disincentives to walk for transit, or you're not going to let your kid go take the bus, because they can't walk through the street safely, and some of this is a function of these being older parts of the community, I don't know if it applies everywhere, but there are places where the streets were not as wide as they are in new subdivisions. And so it creates a different set of conditions that work against the walkability that we're trying to get precisely in the areas that have the most access to transit, or other things. And so we've had to have residential street parking all over the place, and even that doesn't help. And that's just when buildings come in, and they don't provide enough parking for what they need, let alone when you say there's no, you know, shops or stuff going in with no parking at all. And I agree that the market will provide some, but there is a certain amount that the market says, "Oh, well, it'll just spill over, and it's no big deal." And it does, at least while we're in this transition to having high-capacity transit that everyone takes, it really is problematic for mobility and safety, which I think are things. So I appreciate that there are the exceptions, but I do wonder if those exceptions are going to be more often the rule.
Greg?
So I support the general sense of the market is going to provide some level of parking, and so parking requirements generally cause us to overbuild parking in a community, in a community where we're trying to get more transit and less, and less car dependency. But if we do go with a compromised position of eliminating parking requirements within a quarter mile of activity centers, our high frequency, or our transit priority map, and our sensors, then I, the only modification that I would want to the base motion is that the staff in their memo asked, that would be a little bit less prescriptive about exactly where it is, that things could be disruptive, and instead go to more of the staff language that says, that asks for the staff to not eliminate parking requirements in places where the staff goes and finds that it would be specifically disruptive, of course, with all of our input. And so ultimately, if we go to that compromised place of eliminating those parking requirements just within a quarter mile of those several places, which honestly, is probably where we're going to get the transit ridership and the parking reduction we want anyway, I would, my amendment, or I would hope that somebody would amend it in the style the staff has asked.
I understand. Jimmy?
Yeah, and, you know, just again, eliminating parking requirements doesn't eliminate parking, I think we all acknowledge that. It's an interesting kind of example scenario, because most of my neighborhoods, in fact, almost all of the neighborhoods in District 6 have really wide neighborhood streets, and those also cause a public safety issue, because it means that people are speeding. So it's like a damned if you do, damned if you don't situation. So, you know, the common thread here is that it's the cars that are making the street unsafe. So rather than, say, look at a challenging situation and conclude that more parking should be required, I would say maybe we should be getting the sidewalks built as the solution to the problem. But again, I think it's so, it's so much about what the examples are, and I'm afraid we're doing the thing again, where I'm thinking about Street X, and someone else is thinking about Street Y, and we're not actually talking about the same thing.
Heather Pio?
Yeah, and I agree with that. You know, I think that, you know, the staff will be able to come out and accommodate the DNA parking space requirement, and we are going to need their help, you know, in figuring this out. But, you know, I still support that it should be the minimum, not the maximum, because it's a big waste, and it's also increasing the cost of development and the affordability and everything else that goes along with it. So I'm in support.
I do support making modifications for parking as an incentive for ADUs, as has been discussed before, and if it can serve as an incentive with respect to house preservation, I'd put that in that area, as well as additional preservation tool.
Mayor?
Yes.
On the ADA parking issue, I would ask that we try to preserve some level of flexibility for the staff, because, for example, Capital Studios serves lots of people with a variety of disabilities, and they have zero parking, because they have, they are in a different context with their bus line and their location and other things than somewhere in a neighborhood versus something on a corridor. So I would really just want, I would just want to preserve the ability for us to prioritize mobility and housing and accessibility for people with disabilities, while recognizing that, and we want our transportation staff to maybe be able to craft something that works in contexts as different as a small neighborhood fourplex compared to Capital Studios downtown.
Jimmy?
And I would add, just again, to note kind of what Councilmember Robert Madison said, there might not be onsite parking in Capital Studios, but there's certainly street parking.
There's parking, yeah.
No, yes, what I mean is that, but there is not onsite ADA parking and at Capital Studios, and so it was less having to do with your comment, and more just broadly, as we say, there should always be an onsite ADA spot, that there are some instances of places where it's serving that community very well, and there isn't an onsite ADA spot, if that makes sense.
Got it.
Can I speak to that?
Anne?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, so I'll look at that language to that effect. I think it's important to write that in such a way that it would be, not be the norm. You know, what's happened over at Capital Studios is, yeah, they can park on the street, but then they have to get across in their wheelchairs and take a ramp that is, there's been a number of accidents on that ramp, because that ramp had to be built at more of an angle than it should. And here's an example of more flexibility, because of where a placement of a tree was, they forced the ramp to be steeper than you would want, and there have been accidents there, because people are trying to come from the street to the, so we just need to write this, the point is that, you know, folks need to have a safe way to get into the structure if they're in a wheelchair, so...
Paige?
Absolutely. I'm in support of minimizing the need for parking. I think it also is appropriate to mention, it gets us in goals with our, in line with our ASMP goals of not having single-user vehicle trips. And if we're going to do that, I have faith that the new code rewrite is going to put us in a place where if you are near transit, that you have the options to not use your car for everything, or some people may not even need to own one, which would be really nice for our community, to be able to get to a place where that's possible. And also with our community climate plan, I think it's important to know that this is the direction we're heading, and I think we're all generally in agreement about newer modes and newer ways of living, that hopefully, if we can address that here, and look at what staff's going to bring back to us, that it's going to put us in a really good spot to be able to actually live that out.
Staff, are there other questions or issues that you want to raise with us, or that you want us to think about, or additional direction? It's my intent at this point to abide by what the manager asked, which is to ask for a vote on those five questions, so at the very least, we get those five things done. And then we have, you know, the far-ranging conversation. I wonder if you guys had anything that you want to stress. I'll come back out.
Not that we can think of right now, at this moment.
Okay. Anne? And then Leslie?
I think we, I'll ask Councilmember Poole to go first, but...
Okay. I forgot.
We have some additions, and I don't think those are outside what the manager was asking for.
No, no, that's fine.
So, go ahead.
Okay, so I passed around, we've been talking about the district-level planning, also called small-area planning, and we were thinking if we could call it district-level planning, it might reduce some of the confusion that it's, we're not talking about neighborhood planning here, we're talking about larger but discreet areas of town that are focused on activity centers, activity corridors. And so this is essentially the text that was passed unanimously back in, I guess it was September of 2017, with the criteria for staff to bring us a planning process to determine the district-level planning areas. And Councilmember Kitchen and I have worked pretty hard on extracting this and reformatting it, and thinking through the importance of having this as a planning addition to our, to our policy direction document to the city manager. So there is one small new piece that is in this document than what you have seen before, other than the blue text and the red text, which you have seen before. Down at the bottom... Down at the bottom, item number six says "triggers for plan updates," and we're trying to signal how often staff should be prepared, and we should be prepared to ensure they have the resources for it, to trigger when a small-area plan, district-level plan, would be updated. I think that is one of the weaknesses in our planning process at whatever level with our various neighborhood plans and NCCDs and our contact teams and all of the groups out there that are working on policy documents that we have together crafted. And when we ask them, when we're looking at updating over a period of time, usually it's like five years or so, it's not infrequent that we're not able to get that work done because there are other priorities that are out there. So we wanted to indicate that as part of this direction to the city manager, staff would explore mechanisms that would trigger when the plan is updated, like demographic changes, infrastructure improvements have been laid down. And, for example, maybe we have bigger stormwater horizontal infrastructure, which means that we can increase density in an area because the flooding may be reduced because we've done a better job of moving it off of a site. So that would be a trigger to come back to council with recommendations on how to adjust the district-level plans. So Anne may want to speak to this as well, but she and I were really set on ensuring that this direction was included in our document to the city manager.
Okay.
I just asked for clarification.
Yes, and then Jimmy.
So I'm just trying to manage the documents. So Anne and Leslie posted something, then the mayor, I think, made some suggested revisions.
And then what you have was just handed out was the revisions to what I added with an additional six.
Okay. Right, the orange. Okay, so this is, this is the most recent vision, revision. Okay, thank you.
Jimmy?
I still struggle with what you end up with at the end of...
Sorry.
Wow, cut me off twice, Mayor. I struggle with what we, what does the conclusion of this process look like and what does it actually do? Because we already, I mean, we already have, like, sidewalk master plans and bicycle master plans and other things that cover the city. So, and kind of reasonably speaking, I don't imagine many of these are going to make it out to the edge of town that I represent. But that doesn't mean there isn't value here. I'm just really struggling to understand. What's laid out here sounds fine, I just don't know what the conclusion of the planning process is and what it accomplishes.
Would, do you like me to speak, though? Here's my thought on it. So I don't think it's useful if it's just a plan that sits on the shelf. So my thought is it's useful to help direct what the city can direct, you know, we're limited, the market impacts a lot of this, but we do have tools that we use to support how an area is built, or how it develops. So to my mind, for an example would be, you know, we have a number of different activity centers that have been proposed by Imagine Austin. So you could do a plan of one of those areas about what that should look, what that might look like in line with our city goals. And then you can use that plan to help us direct the investments that we control at the city level, whether those are affordable housing investments, other kinds of investments, parks investments, transportation investments, to see where we're spending our dollars. The other thing might be to think about how we do economic development. And so, for example, one of the things that is coming back to us is when we revamped our economic development program, we asked for a place-based one to come back to us so that we could use incentive dollars in particular places where we wanted to support small businesses or creative spaces or things like that. So the point from my perspective is that if we want to achieve the vision that we have in Imagine Austin, that has a vision for how places may develop around the city, like activity centers, then we need to take it a step further than to just say, well, wouldn't it be nice if this particular area was an activity center? And we have some tools as a city to help make that happen. Now, we can't go all the way there because the market controls a lot, but we can do some things. So, and we, the examples that we have already of this kind of planning is things like the Statesman property, I forget what we call that area, but that's a planning area for what that might look like. There are some other examples throughout the city where this has been done. So in the, my understanding is that this kind of planning is a practice that is used in other cities to help you get to where you want to go from how you want your land used to be. So that's how I see it being useful. I think that one of the things we don't have in our city is that planning is not a tool that we are using to the best, we're really not using planning in a way that we could for our city. So that's what I mean by that. And it does, it occurs all over the city. For me, far South Austin, there's a proposed activity center in the Mancheck Slaughter area. I would love to have a conversation about what that could develop into so that it could become an activity center. And that's a matter of planning that area. I've got an area out that's even further south than that, that's been proposed as an activity area. So I think that, I think it's an important tool that we don't have right now. So, and then what we end up doing with it is up to us as a city to actually make it work. But just because, but I don't think, well, I think it's an important tool for us to have, I'll just leave it at that.
It's so strange how I just have this block. I don't, I don't understand exactly what it does. So maybe, maybe a good idea would be for you and I to sit down and take an example area that's in neither, yeah, that's kind of not a most controversial spot that we would probably pick and just kind of think through what that might look like. And I would say, to the extent that you kind of listed a bunch of stuff here, I am probably more likely to support prioritizing areas, like you've got into B5, areas that are in the gentrification displacement study and focusing on areas where gentrification is a primary factor, and displacement, as opposed to just areas, let's see, later you've got in three, those most susceptible to change, which is a much bigger area as opposed to just, so I think that maybe get, may get me farther to the ways if we're thinking about this through an equity lens.
Yeah, I think this were just suggested areas, you know, and the thinking was to, you know, there's a whole other step in actually identifying the areas. This was, these were suggested.
And if I could just weigh in on that, I agree that gentrification and displacement study, absolutely, and we've named it in here, because I think that should be a starting point. And we can look to see what area is in early stages of just displacement justification so that we can apply some tools and maybe stop it or reverse it.
Natasha?
Oh, I think Jimmy probably spoke to my confusion already, so when you and Councilmember Kitchen meet, I'd like to be there as well, because I also don't understand the practical application of what's being suggested here. It seems counterintuitive to not just zone the whole city, you know, the same way. So I'd like to also be a part of y'all's conversation. And I think in some ways, you guys both have any institutional knowledge that I don't quite have yet will be helpful for me.
Well, and this is not instead of zoning the city. This is, this is in addition to what you might do with your, with your base zoning for the city. It's not instead of.
No, and that wasn't how I interpreted it. But it does seem to me as though having two separate classifications would be problematic. So here's the base zoning, and in addition to that, we do this, this...
No, it wouldn't be separate classifications either.
Okay.
It would be, an example might be knowing what tools we have in our zoning toolbox, we can apply them in maybe a different configuration on, in this district-level plan to support, that's a transit hub, and there's a regional center or something like that. We're using what we already have and crafted, and then showing how it applies in a rather larger, but yet discreet area, not as small as a neighborhood. It would be an assortment of neighborhoods that are kind of a coherent part of the city. So to help all this, that's one reason why we wanted the city manager to come back, to give us some of his input on how we might go about doing this. But we wanted to get this piece that, again, we had talked about in 2017 as being an essential element to getting the zoning placed properly on the ground. So it's an additional tool to help us know how an area is growing and what zoning should be there. We're not creating new zoning. I don't think I've helped you at all.
No.
I do think that this is something that we should have maps in front of us and kind of show the areas of town that would be a little bit more easier.
Do you want to talk to area planning?
Yeah, Mayor, Stevie Greathouse, Planning and Zoning. I'm manager over long-range planning and urban design. Thank you for having me here this afternoon. Just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of update of what the planning and zoning department has been working on in terms of looking towards future ways of doing small-area planning since 2017. And when the resolution that's been referenced was passed, that basically directed staff to approach small-area planning in a different way than we have in the past. The resolution in 2017 was basically asking us to pivot and begin focusing small-area planning resources on centers and corridors and those areas of the city that we know are probably going to be changing and that we ought to be focusing resources around, and that we ought to be putting our planning in place in locations where it could leverage city investments in mobility and transit. In May of last year, we provided a relatively lengthy memo to City Council and Planning Commission that began to outline a sort of a process for pivoting and beginning to develop small-area plans along corridors and centers. Outline that as a, as a planning product type that we'd be delivering in the future. District Plan is a nice name for it also, but we've just been calling them small-area plans focused on centers and corridors at this point. We're actually teed up, I believe, to bring a request for council action to you all at your May 5 meeting that would initiate a pilot planning process along the North Lamar Corridor. Staff's notion is that we would suggest piloting this new planning process along a particular corridor, taking the data that comes from that pilot to use as lessons learned for how we move forward with future plans as we kind of move into this new arena of planning that is going to be somewhat different from how we've done neighborhood plans in the past. We want to make sure that we really are gathering the data and doing that, doing that well, starting off slowly within the North Lamar Corridor and then using those lessons learned as we move to future areas. In terms of the, sort of the information that has been laid out, I think it fits really nicely, both with the draft resolution that you will be seeing initiating or asking you to consider initiating a pilot small-area plan along the North Lamar Corridor, has a lot of this information in even that resolution. So we'd be asking council to direct us to develop a plan along that corridor that addresses a lot of the key policy concerns that are kind of listed under the objective piece in the document that you all have laid out. We're also in the process of developing scoring of all of the other Imagine Austin centers and corridors, particularly those that either are planned for high-capacity transit under the Project Connect vision, or that have, and/or that have received investments under the 2016 Mobility Bond. We're in the process of scoring those along criteria that pretty much match up directly with what you have described in your planning process and would anticipate bringing back to the council at some point a map that basically shows staff's recommendation for kind of high, medium, low-priority areas based on those criteria. We won't be ready for the fifth with that information, but probably not too long after. Timeline and resources are really tied together. We are envisioning the small-area planning process along corridors would hopefully be somewhat quicker than some of our neighborhood planning processes in the past, with about a 12 to 18 months of active planning in those processes. But the resources piece is a significant piece to kind of timeline on how quickly we can move through the plans. Under our current staffing resources, we expect that we could do one to two plans simultaneously. So that breaks down to, the best-case scenario under current staffing and resources for the department, that would be two plans per year, two plans per 18 months, kind of best-case. And in that May 11 memo from last year that I referenced, we actually provided some analysis of kind of what an additional, even as many as 10 FTE, would still only produce the ability to develop four to, four plans per year, which is, you know, obviously roughly 20 plans over a five-year basis. We've got over 100 centers and corridors combined, so if there's a vision for being able to develop plans for every single center and corridor that's been identified on the Imagine Austin map, that obviously could take a while with those resources and with even a pretty huge addition to existing resources. And I think that, and then community engagement, I just wanted to emphasize that the proposal that you all will receive in terms of a resolution to initiate a pilot planning process along the North Lamar Corridor, absolutely 100% in agreement with the description of community engagement under this document. This would be moving away from the neighborhood planning paradigm that we've used in the past, where our engagement has been kind of primarily participation of adjacent property owners, tends to be hard to kind of get renters involved, and really pivoting towards a priority where we engage those folks, but also engage transit riders, folks that may be coming into the corridor to use it, folks that may be working in the corridor, and people that may want to live in the corridor but can't, as well as kind of thinking about city-wide interests. So the community engagement for that pilot will definitely be in line with what's kind of been laid out in this document.
My hope is that there's a third way here in terms of being able to get a lot more planning done a lot more quickly. And I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means restructuring what it is that is the planning or how that comes out, but it just seems as if so many of the conversations we're having around the city with respect to affordability, get us back to a planning conversation, or making sure the transit work gets us back to a planning conversation. But just so many things seem to get there. And I, you know, I, I know that Denver, when it did its code, came out of that process with the planning process, it was very different from what they had going into. And I don't know if there are other places to look at, but obviously, two plans a year won't substantially get us to where we need to go. Four plans a year really doesn't substantially get us to where we need to go. And I don't know what the alternative is. I don't, I don't know what the third way is, but it's, I'd love for us to try and figure out a way to do more planning, recognizing it's going to take more resources or a different way to look at planning, I'm not sure what. Allison?
Thank you. I first wanted to thank Anne and Leslie for bringing this forward, and Mayor had planning as well in an earlier version of his proposals. I think it's really critical as we move forward. We're setting some audacious goals about capacity, I'm not sure I'm totally in board on those, but what I do believe is that we have an opportunity by different tools to up the capacity over time, and planning is one of those tools. So we don't have to, from the get-go, have all the capacity we ever need to have out of this land development code. Planning allows us to increase that capacity over time where we want it, where we have goals where we want it. And so that's why, if you take Imagine Austin and then you plan in those areas, they weren't all ripe when Imagine Austin was passed to be developed, but many more of them are now. But we don't have the planning infrastructure for those places to really allow them to thrive in some of the ways that some other parts of town have, which were also part of a planning process. So for instance, if you took sections on a corridor that had a bunch of warehouses and they were in, they were just off a high-opportunity area, or they were near something that was considered a desirable place to live, you could go in and do a planning process and say, hey, we don't want warehouses on our corridor, we want to have housing. And so you can, at that point, go in and figure out, okay, well, if I give them a whole bunch of entitlements here at a residential, if they want to take advantage of them, can I tip that balance and make it be residential, which is what we want as a city? You also can have the public process happen with the community, and then you understand really what's needed, what are the pieces that are needed in order to make it work. And you can allocate public resources with respect to sidewalks and other stuff so that they support the project and they're not piecemeal. So for me, that's really important. We have staff who have trained in planning, it is very valuable. I think sometimes through the Codex process and how we've set this up, we've lost sight of the importance of planning and the importance of context sensitivity, which the planning really allows us to get at. So I'm excited to see this be part of what we do in the future. And we've done it a lot in the past.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything else? All right. Ann?
The addition number two.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not going to go through it all. We've already talked about affordability. I just suggest that you take a look at it. And there are two items that I didn't include on this that are in the blueprint, but I didn't include them because they're already in the base document. And that relates to the ADUs. And I'm forgetting what the other one was now. But in any case, this is designed to build upon what's already in answer to the one to five. So that's why the ADUs aren't specifically mentioned in here because they're already talked about. So I just encourage you, I would really ask if anybody has any concerns that you don't want to go forward with any of these or if you have questions about any of it, if you'd let me know. You can post on the message board. So because again, I pulled these from the Housing Blueprint. I think there are things, there are policies that, my impression anyway, is that there are policies that as a council, we've already said that we want to do, and I just want to make sure they happen. So if I'm misunderstanding about any of them, if you'll just let me know on the message board, that would be great.
Hang on. Greg, Kathy, Jimmy.
Oh, boy.
I think the only, it was a quick scan, but the only place on that document that I noticed that I had questions is one, exactly how bedroom requirements end up working because we, I don't know if we've seen those before, so I'd just be interested in what the options might be or just getting those, but it's in the blueprint and so I think it's something we should look at. And then second, this goes back to the longer conversation we had earlier around missing middle housing. The Housing Blueprint says we should develop affordable housing bonuses that go along with some of our missing middle zones. And that's, the language you pull says, is from a section that says that. Let's come up with some small-scale housing bonuses, which I've been, we passed resolutions on in 2015 and 2016 in support of affordability and Lock does some of that. But what I don't want is for this to say, to say that the only way you can ever build missing middle housing is by participating in an affordable housing bonus program because much of the affordable, of the missing middle housing we've just touted during this work session was just built without an affordable housing bonus program. It is great, especially now that it's a little bit older. So I want the opportunity to create some that is just around, that is just good, and then also for us to have some income-restricted ones through targeted programs and not lose sight of having both of those as options.
Okay. That's what's intended here? So if you read, I think it's clear, but if you read something that tells you it's not clear, just let me know. And also, the other thing is, this is designed as, is direction to the city manager to bring back options. So it's not, this language does not set how something would be done. It's asking the city manager to bring back options to include in the code. So.
Okay. Kathy?
So I'm supportive, I need to look a little bit more closely at these documents, but especially the second one. I'm pretty familiar with the planning one because it's gone through several iterations. And I'm supportive of including that as direction. Again, I think I'm generally supportive of the other one. I just need to look at it a little bit more closely. I think there was some back and forth about how this would be incorporated, and I think there was a suggestion, Mayor, possibly from you, about including it as a budget rider? Am I mixing that up with some other? Anyway, there was some, that was the plan. I would just suggest we not include it as a budget rider. I'm prepared to support it as part of the answers that we give back to the city manager.
Yeah, this is intended to be turned into actual code language.
Yes.
These are the things that relate to the code.
And I support that, just because there was a comment out there about budget riders. I just wanted to say I like keeping it with the planning discussion.
I think the comment I had made with respect to the planning document was I was wondering whether that was, some of the broad principles I thought fit really well in the land development code. The specific criteria, I'm not sure fit in the code. And I reserved the opportunity to take a look at it to see if that's something that fit in a criteria manual as opposed to being something that was in the land development code. But I haven't had a chance to go back and look at that again.
Jimmy? Okay. Kathy?
Super important question. We have a lot of different documents. Are we operating under the continued assumption that we are making amendments to that, what was it, April 11 slash 13 document?
The answer to that is yes. I may very well take a stab at another document, and if it's helpful, then we can use it, and if it's not, then we won't. But the default is that we'll make amendments to the document that was supposed to three weeks ago or whatever that was.
I think that may be the easy. I like the idea of proceeding along, even if we have lots of amendments to consider, proceeding along with the same document that we're all familiar with.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that we know right now that that's what we're going to amend. And, you know, and Mayor, if you have other suggestions, then you can bring it as an amendment. But I think we should keep the same.
It would be brought as an amendment if I did.
Right. I think we just need, so that we're not trying to understand where we're starting from and also so the public will understand. So did we get a time certain? What did we decide?
We're going to do it as soon as we can.
I think the public needs to understand when they should be there.
I think, I think we have a meeting that's open, that's been open for us to be able to do it. So if I were to say a time certain, I would say if we could tee it up before we take citizen communication for us to be able to talk through issues, we'll do that. If we can't, hopefully we'll be able to take it up after lunch. We too have some zoning cases and two of them look like they could be something that's discussed. I'm not sure about that. But I think we can tell the public that we're not going to end before a certain time. I just don't want us to, preclude us from being able to talk through issues.
I understand that, but this is a huge issue for the public and we've, we've actually, since last Friday, we've put some really new, specific stuff on the table that's after the last opportunity that people had to comment. And so I think it's just easier for them if we say that we're going to start at a certain time.
My only thought was to keep it open because that would give people the greatest amount of time to be able to talk. But I'm fine with the council doing, to limiting it and saying they can't talk before a certain time or limiting it and saying they can't talk after a certain time. I think I wouldn't agree with that, but to whatever degree the council wants to limit when people can talk, we certainly can do that.
Jimmy?
I prefer giving the public as many options as possible, and we can say we'll allow folks who are there before noon to speak if they'd like to speak. We'll allow folks who are there before dinner to speak if they'd like to speak, and then if we're still going, then we're still going. But I don't want to set up a situation where only the people who can come to City Hall after 4:00 p.m. are the ones who get to speak.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm talking about at all. What I'm talking about is people want to hear when we're talking about something. And so they want to know when we're going to start talking about something as much as we can possibly estimate. And I know we don't know for sure.
Are you saying that people, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are you saying that people want to hear us deliberate before or after they have an opportunity to speak?
I'm not saying either one of those. I think what I'm saying is that people want to know when we're going to take it up from a deliberation standpoint.
Because I'm comfortable with the fact that we broadcast and then save the video archive in perpetuity because my constituents have a much difficult, a very difficult time coming to City Hall. And if it's just about observing the debate and hearing the debate, I mean, that's going to be archived. It's very public.
I think that people would like for us to listen to what they have to say since they haven't had an opportunity to comment on a lot of this. So I know it's difficult to set a time. And I know I'm not offering a solution, so I'll think about that. I just, I just think that they're part of this process too, and I'm trying to think about what the best way is to, to address what they, they might need to hear.
Kathy?
My sense is that we'll have people who want to come and are only able to come and address us after dinner. Is that other people's sense of this? And so I, I would, you know, again, I'll think about it a little bit before Thursday as well, but my guess would be, I mean, one good option would be to take them, take them earlier as they want to, but to make sure that we have some opportunity after dinner to have them speak as well. Does that seem reasonable?
I would do, that's what we did last meeting, and I would do that again.
Yeah. Is that kind of our plan?
Well, I know we've also had some where people will come, you know, on their lunch break, where they take lunch at 1:00, or some people have had to speak before they go pick up their kids from daycare. So I, I think there's a couple of different time slots that work for people, and my understanding is we're probably going to be talking about this for most of the meeting. So I'd hate to delay it until dinner and then be on break all day.
I think if we do this way, we did it last time, we're saying we're not going to take any action until after dinner, and that people who show up after dinner will be given the ability to be able to speak before we take action. Greg?
Does that mean that we won't be voting on amendments between potentially the first thing in the morning and all the way until after the last speaker is done speaking? It's just that we've got like potentially dozens of amendments to vote on. I don't remember exactly how we laid out last time. I really remember that we laid out the public testimony was really for the first shot, and then we were going to have used the years where the public testimony we have to craft amendments and then to start voting on them. If the idea is that somebody can come testify after dinner and we get a couple hours worth of people, are we starting voting on dozens of amendments at 9:30 at night? I think the answer to that, I imagine that there's a majority here that thinks no. So I would prefer maybe to set to, if we're going to have speakers, I, when people asked me when they should come and speak, I told them the first meeting. Maybe I heard wrong. But I told them, if you want to talk on this, this is the meeting to talk on it because we're voting on it the next meeting. But if the impression was, or if the fact is that we told people you could speak at both, which I'm conceding may have happened, I, I don't remember it. And if we did, then that's fine, people can talk. If we're, then I would say, let's have two slots for speakers at two specific discrete times, but that we're going to be discussing and voting and taking amendments throughout the day because we can't, we're not going to do a good job of it. I imagine most people would come and tell us do a better job than taking all the votes at 1:00 in the morning. At least if I was a constituent, that's what I would come and tell us.
Good point, too. What do people think? Jimmy?
Take the testimony throughout the day, but we've got to get to work. I mean, I think that's, that's what we've got to do. And as, as the mayor pro tem has said fairly eloquently and repeatedly, we have heard a lot from the community, but for new things that are being proposed, but also those are things that we talked about either in public or in other places before. So I think we just got to get to work and not leave ourselves in a place where we're deliberating at 10 and 11 and 12 o'clock at night.
Leslie?
Can you remind me what number this is on our agenda for Thursday? Seven? Eleven? Okay. So, and it's not on consent, right?
It was 11.
So usually what we do is...
I say that, I don't know that. That's true. It was D11 on this agenda.
I was just thinking with the lower number, that would tend to mean that we would take it up earlier rather than later. And if we signal that to the community, then let them know that once we're done with consent, the things that we have to stop for are zoning, I guess, which is at 2:00, citizen communication at 12:00. So it sounds to me like just by its placement on the agenda, it would come up earlier rather than later. And I don't know how to deal with directing people to come early or late because their schedules really compel them rather than ours. But I, I do think that bringing up amendments, which we have talked through pretty extensively today and two weeks ago at our work session, we, it may not be as heavy a lift to, to vote in various amendments that we've kind of rehearsed today and two weeks ago than, than we think, although I haven't seen all of them yet probably. But just knowing what's in here, I think we all have a pretty good idea about which way we're going to go, and we may not have to have too much back and forth debate on it. So maybe it'll work out okay without trying to harness it too much.
We also have the ability, if we take a vote during the day on amendment, to take a vote in the evening to change our mind on an amendment if someone testifies or someone brings something up and we think we really want to reconsider that one, just take some majority of the people, the same majority we'd take to, to change something in order to be able to reconsider a vote we took earlier in the day. Okay? So we're going to start considering this as we're able to consider, we're going to take people as they come, and I would suggest that we come back after dinner, give people a chance to be able to speak. But that, but we'll start voting on amendments, and if we vote on something early in the day that people want to change their mind on, we'll entertain that and enable that to happen. With that, it's 4:25. Meeting is...
I did.
I'm sorry.
I just got here, so I don't know what's customary. I was going to let you all work that part out, but I did have some questions and concerns about this addition number two on affordable housing. The minimum bedroom requirements and then prioritize areas close to high-performing schools. Both of those make my spidey senses go off. I have several schools in my district that are not high-performing, so I don't want those families to be excluded. And then the requirement for bedroom numbers, I'd like for us to be able to talk through that some and just sort of talk about what the implications of that could be for, I mean, everybody in the city of Austin, but most especially the constituents that I'm, you know, supposed to be looking at.
That makes sense. I was repeating what was in the blueprint, but I get your point and happy to change that, you know?
Awesome.
About the high-performing schools. I don't remember all the conversation about why this ended up the way it was in the blueprint, but I get your point, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can we, can you?
Kathy?
Sorry. I'm sorry. Where is that? Point, Councilmember Madison.
Addition number two of affordable housing.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Okay. And so I know that, Councilmember Kitchen, were you saying that you were going to revise the multi-bedroom?
No, no, I was talking about the high-performing school part.
Okay. Because I do think it's important, you know, and I know we've had, we've had conversations about this and we're not all in agreement, but we really do, in my opinion, I think we need to provide, the market is not providing that option of multi-bedroom units. And I, I think that we need to do more, I believe we need to do more in our code to encourage slash require it, because again, the market is not providing that, and there are many families in Austin with children or caregivers who are really, who need that option. So, yeah, thanks for the...
Which I can appreciate, but I'd like to encourage better than requirement. Requirement to me sounds like a mandate. Mandates sound almost punitive. The result, if you don't, you know, comply, is punishment, in which case I don't want to dissentify, you know, developers. And so it's the, it's the word specifically requirement that has, I don't like requirements necessarily as it pertains to multiple bedrooms. And if for no other reason, like you said, we don't all necessarily agree about what families need, what's culturally appropriate, what's required, what's frankly decadent for some of the families that I work with to have a multiple-bedroom situation. So, and we're probably never going to find ourselves in consensus there, in which case we don't have to, but requirement, I struggle with that.
Yeah, I don't know how to, I don't know how to resolve that because we just, again, the market's not producing it, and we can encourage it and have it in planning documents all we want, but we're not, we're for the most part not getting multi-bedroom market-rate units or affordable units for that matter. So, you know, and I, I think back to a situation that actually was in District 10, but my office was involved because we had a personal relationship with, with one of the people who was reaching out on behalf of the community members, and there were many families who were going to be displaced from an apartment complex up in the far west area, and there were families who needed multiple bedrooms. And my staff member Ashley called lots and lots of apartment complexes trying to find an affordable rental rate with at least three bedrooms. And, you know, there were all kinds of issues, including the fact that the apartment complex itself was changed, was under new ownership and they wouldn't allow a family of that size to be in a multi, in a two-bedroom apartment. And so, you know, trying to find a three-bedroom apartment that was affordably priced was, was near impossible. And so, you know, again, I think that families, there are families in our community at various income levels who want that option, and if the market's not providing it, I don't know how we get there. So, I don't know. Let's have more conversation about it and see if there's somewhere where, you know, how do we, how do we get the market to produce this if we're... Yeah, I don't know. That's just the question. The quandary, and we've been in the quandary for a long time and haven't made any resolution to it. So, but thanks for your, thanks for your perspective on it.
Okay. Anything else? 4:30, this meeting is adjourned.